Good evening. Welcome, everybody, here, but before we get started, I'd like to welcome Patrick A. Bent from Interquest Church in Milton, Georgia, to lead us in invocation.
And let's just all close our eyes for a moment and... As you close your eyes, take a nice, deep breath, feel your body being filled with God's love this night. As you breathe in, ask that God's love fill you now. And then as we exhale, we allow this love to flow through our bodies and to fill this space with God's love. Father, I call forth the highest blessing this night for this meeting. I ask a blessing on this council and Mayor Lockwood, that they be guided for the highest and best of this city of Milton. Father, we are blessed to live in such a beautiful city, a beautiful state, beautiful country. And we open our hearts and say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you, Father, for all of our blessings." Our prayer this night, "Thy will be done." And so it is. Amen.
Thank you very much. Hey, welcome tonight. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Milton City Council, Monday, September 22nd, 2014, to order. Will our city clerk please call roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the September 22nd, 2014, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited. So please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick?
Here.
This evening, we are honored to have the sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
Ready, hold. To the right, face. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And salute. I pledge allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two. To the left, face. To the front, arch. Again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. It's always an honor to have the sons of the American Revolution. We're also honored to have the daughters of the American Revolution with us here tonight, too. And also, I want to, for a lot of you folks, if you haven't been here to a meeting in a while, apologize for the one entrance and the security check, but that is, that's not something that the city decided to do. That's in, because the result of a state law. So we appreciate your understanding and patience with that. So I'll open up. City clerk, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of meeting agenda. Agenda item number 14, 253.
Okay. Do we have anything else on the agenda or any changes? I know we might want to move one of the new business items with the appointment of a member to the Parks and Rec Board after the consent agenda. We also need to have an executive session, an executive session to discuss land acquisition and pending litigation. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, I'll offer a motion-
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I don't know that the nuance presents itself, but it would be both potential and pending litigation, so I don't know if that's important.
Okay. If we could add an executive session to discuss land acquisition, potential, and pending litigation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of an executive session for potential and pending litigation and land acquisition and moving the items that pertain to appointments to, after the consent agenda.
From new business.
From new business.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
I got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Okay. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Now, again, this, under general public comment, would just be something that's on your mind that's in general and not for a specific item on tonight's agenda. So if you have, there's probably folks in here with public comment on certain items, that'll be taking place during the hearings for those items, but right now, we're just calling general public comment. So, Sudi, do you have any general public comment?
Yes, sir, I do have two public comment cards. The first one comes from Diane Ellison.
Good evening. I'm Diane Ellison. I live at 14680 Creek Club Drive in the Crooked Creek subdivision. I thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the gating application submitted by Crooked Creek. After viewing the meeting from September 8th, I wanted to stress some points that were brought up against gating and express a major concern as to the process that has brought us to this point. As you know, Crooked Creek is a community of over 600 homes. By reducing the number of signatures required on the petition to 67% in order to change to gating, there are a significant number of people who will be affected financially and in other ways. More than 200 families representing at least 800 Milton citizens could be forced to do something they may be very opposed to doing and believe infringes on their rights of homeownership in Crooked Creek. As Ms. Wynn stated a few weeks ago, those in opposition to gating were not represented. My husband looked for answers to some questions we had from staff at the city of Milton. We are appreciative of the quick response and willingness to answer questions clearly and completely by people like Mr. Lucas. We found that much of the information gathered was contradictory to or missing from the information available on our website and presented at the town hall meetings. A request to the property manager to share an email my husband had composed with all residents was denied by the board. To bring something into question at a town hall meeting was to put the board on the defense of which could be quite intimidating. It might have caused some to hold back on asking questions. The board finally did agree to address some of my husband's concerns at a board meeting and made changes to the Q and A for gating after obtaining the required number of signatures. The issue of safety was brought up by those for and against gating. Speeding has been an issue, and as a friend of mine who lives in a gated community said, "It will likely not go away with gating." I have never felt unsafe in my neighborhood with respect to crime, of which there has been very little. I do feel unsafe on the roads where the residents are using stop signs as yield signs, speeding, and passing when they need to go faster than 25. With the police unable to write tickets for these daily infractions in a gated community, another point that was not covered in any of the town hall meetings, the situation could get worse than it is at present. While speeding is often attributed to vehicles cutting through the neighborhood, a study commissioned this past May by the HOA concluded that less than 10% of daily traffic is cut through. This was conducted before the traffic circle at Cogburn and Francis Roads was complete. As Ms. Thielen stated, speed tables might be the solution to the speeding issue, though the board told residents they could not be installed unless we were gated. Mr. Lucas confirmed to my husband that this was not the case. I know that safety is an important part of the council's decision, and it is likely that the speeding and lack of respect for stop signs will increase without police presence, making the roads in Crooked Creek potentially more dangerous for drivers and pedestrians and bikers. Numerous articles and academic studies I have read concluded that gating has little or no impact on crime. It is important to note that if gated, the entire neighborhood will not be fenced in with many access points from the golf course. Traffic delays on Highway 9, particularly heading northbound from the Bethany Bend intersection, could well be increased as vehicles stack up waiting to make the left turn onto Crooked Creek Club Drive due to those slowing to go through the gate or being stopped by the guard. We recognize and appreciate the effort the homeowners' board has put into gating. However, they have all become so vested in it that objectivity seems to have been lost. They have maintained from the start that they are unanimous in their support of gating. Unfortunately, only one side was presented online at the town hall meetings and in gathering signatures, which robbed residents of the right to make an educated decision. We obtained relevant information early on from reliable sources, but the board chose not to share this information with the residents. Only after the HOA board acquired enough signatures did they amend the Q and A.
One minute.
We discovered this by checking the website, as it was not sent out proactively to the community. Given the number of people impacted negatively, both financially and in terms of the type of community in which they chose to live, we request that the city council defer their decision on the gating matter with the suggestion that the homeowners' board obtain a vote that is acquired with greater objectivity. Residents should have all of the information given to them, both for and against gating, in order to make an educated decision. They should be able to vote in person with a neutral entity and without the pressure of the board or a street captain coming to their door. It seems this would be a more fair way of gauging the strength of support for gating. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Patricia Overland.
Hello. Thank you for your time. Won't take long. My name's Patricia Overland. I live at 1865 Birmingham Road, and I recently returned from a family health trip in Arizona to find a lovely tornado siren at the front of my pasture and the front of my driveway. My son and I have a international equestrian facility, and we have clients that come from all over the world, horses that are Olympic value investment. We've been there since 2000, developed it ourselves. When we first moved there, Canterbury on the Lake had just started being developed. I tried to acquire the five acres next to me to enhance and secure safety and privacy and protection, and it was already allotted for houses. So at that time, my son and I decided it was imperative that we look after not only our horses and riders, but our neighbors. And we've enjoyed Alpharetta for 15 years, and we've loved the rural community. So we did quite a bit of added fencing, double fences, double paddocks, extra high fencing for those high-strung young horses that we do bring in and our Olympic clients do bring in. So we've really gone to an extra expense and time and consideration. What this brings for our business and our clients, basically, it can come to a halt. They have a rightful concern, as I, for the safety when that tornado siren goes off, and not so much during the middle of the night of the storm, because our horses would be in, but it's the monthly testings, perhaps even annual bi-monthly testings. There have been some cases where they have growl testings, which means the, which I'm sure you know, but it does the first Saturday or first Wednesday allocated is full rotation, and any testing prior to that will be at lower velocity and a growl and quiet. But yet, if not give a notice, which I never was received notice in a mailing or email at my residence of the placing, and without notice of a testing schedule, it's nearly impossible to maintain and offer the safety to not only my clients, but my neighbors. And on top of that is the issue of losing revenue, devaluation of my property, because even if I wanted to sell it now as a horse farm, I probably wouldn't be able to. And then my biggest fear was my insurance company, and I received a letter today that said this letter is to inform you that the tornado siren recently placed at 1865 Birmingham Road will increase the risk associated with insuring your Irish Oak Farm. The insurance risk is due to the potential effect an activated siren could result in injury to horse, especially if your horses are frightened to the extent of escaping pastures, creating a potential for property damage and personal injury to neighboring residents. The unfortunate placing of the siren in close proximity of your farm, the value placed on Olympic level horses and your business of training horse and rider is the reason that this additional risk must be considered by your current insurance carrier and will likely lead to a non-renewal, requiring to search for another carrier that will assume this risk. Preliminary inquiry with other carriers are not promising.
One minute remaining.
We hold Irish Oak's farm in high esteem and regret this unfortunate situation. Keep us informed of any changes. And in going through the assessment in the manual, my farm was photographed in here as an example of the rural community, what the city of Milton provided to its residents, the incentive to move here, and now this same brochure is threatening my value and my ability to do business. So I have a copy of the letter, if you'd like it, also the photograph in here of the farm, and if not, you want it, that's great. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, city, do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. And we'll move on to our consent agenda.
First item this evening, under consent, approval of the August 23rd, 2014 special called work session minutes. Agenda item number 14, 254. Next, approval of the September 8th, 2014 regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14, 255. Our next item is approval of the financial statements for the period ending August 2014. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Kim Saunders Yoga LLC. Agenda item number 14, 257. Next, approval of a revision to the personnel policy handbook regarding compensation and benefits. Agenda item number 14, 258. Next, approval of JAM's neutral mediator fee agreement as part of the Fulton County Municipalities SDS dispute resolution process. This is agenda item number 14, 259. Our seventh consent agenda item this evening is approval of the acquisition of 1,849.71 square feet of construction and maintenance easement at 15735 Hopewell Road from Yuragados, Kapaswarni, and Kamakshe Jaraman for a combined purchase price of $3,432. Agenda item number 14, 260. Next, approval of the acquisition of 72.90 square feet of right-of-way and 322.41 square feet of construction and maintenance easement at 15704 Hopewell Road from Christina Moller and David Whitler for a combined purchase price of $2,591. This is agenda item number 14, 261. Our next consent agenda item, approval of the acquisition of 0.053 acres of right-of-way and 0.104 acres of construction and maintenance easement at Crabapple Road west of Crabapple Chase Drive from SHF Crabapple LLC for a combined purchase price of $15,800. Agenda item number 14, 262. Next, approval of the acquisition of 0.084 acres of right-of-way and 0.124 acres of construction easement at Brannion Trail and Itasca Walk from SHF Crabapple LLC for a combined purchase price of $310,000. Agenda item number 14, 263. Next, approval of the acquisition of 0.919 acres of right-of-way, 0.027 acres of construction and maintenance easement, and 0.46 acres of construction easement at Brannion Trail and Itasca Walk from SHF Crabapple LLC for a combined purchase price of $1,181,146. Agenda item number 14, 264. Next, approval of the acquisition of 0.003 acres of right-of-way and 0.064 acres of construction and maintenance easement at 12685 Crabapple Road from William S. Grove, DMD, for a combined purchase price of $20,900. Agenda item number 14, 265. Approval of the acquisition of 0.028 acres of construction and maintenance easement at 12595 Crabapple Road from TI Crabapple Station for a combined purchase price of $11,000. Agenda item number 14, 266. Our fourteenth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Maritage Systems, Inc. for community development management software. Agenda item number 14, 267.
Mayor, I'll move to accept the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilwoman Laska, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Sudi, if you'll call the next item, I think we moved a, an item up for this, at this point, for the filling the board seat.
Our next item, consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the city of Milton by appointing a member for District 3, Post 2. Agenda item number 14, 269.
Okay. Councilmember Moller.
Miss Mayor, it's my pleasure tonight to recommend Joey Costanzo for the open position for District 3, Post 2. Joey is a native of Leesburg, Virginia, a city just outside of Washington, DC. He has a degree in accounting, studying at Frostburg State University in Maryland before finishing his education in Atlanta in 1993. Joey worked for Dentel Corporation before starting his own business, signed by Tomorrow in Alfreda in 2001. And Joey's love of parks goes back to when he was growing up in the DC area. Joey spent lots of time with his grandfather at one of our national parks, Arlington National Cemetery, where his grandfather was superintendent of the cemetery for over 20 years. Joey moved to the Milton area in 2003, where he's lived since then. He lives here with his wife, Kim, and his, their two daughters, Reagan and Madison, who both attend Birmingham Falls Elementary School. It's my pleasure to nominate and recommend Joey Costanzo as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution appointing a member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the city of Milton by appointing a member for District 3, Post 2.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have, Sudi, can I swear Joey in? If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm-
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of-
That I will faithfully perform the duties of-
Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Milton Parks and Rec advisory board.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And I, as always, any of our volunteers on our board, we appreciate everything you do, and it's like you've got your beautiful family here and your girls, so hopefully some of the things you do will benefit them positively in the future, along with all the other.
Can we get Jason get? Joe, can we have Jason take a picture?
Yeah.
With his family?
Yeah. You guys want to come on down?
Yeah.
Joey, you okay? Family, you're good. Okay. Now, move on to our reports and presentations. If, Sudi, you'll call the next item.
Our next item this evening, we have proclamations recognizing Constitution Week presented to the daughters of the American Revolution, to the Martha Stewart Bullock chapter, and the Chesta T. River chapter, and the sons of the American Revolution Piedmont chapter. This is being presented by Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Thank you, Sudi. Two documents in our history that we live and die by. The Declaration of Independence established our freedom, and the Constitution outlined our form of government, our rights, and how we are to conduct ourselves in this country. Last, last week, on the 17th of September, was the celebration of Constitution Day. And Constitution Week extends from the 17th through the 23rd of September. So tonight, we're here to present some proclamations to two of the foremost patriotic organizations in the United States, the daughters of the American Revolution and the sons of the American Revolution. And at this time, I'd like to have each of the different organizations come forward. The DAR chapter, Martha Stewart Bullock chapter, Paula Nelson Regent, Sharon Souders, First Vice Regent, Carol Bryant, Mary Simons, Jennifer Gorrell, and Anne Coverley. Then from the Chesta T. River chapter, Joyce Mortison, Regent, Carol Woethrich, Sue Masialik, and Beverly Stone. Then from the sons of the American Revolution, the Piedmont chapter is Color Guard Commander Bill Cable, Paul Prescott, Colonel George Thurman, and Shep Hammack. If you all would come up, and I'll come down there and, uh, read the proclamation. And afterwards, we'll have Congress. We're getting uniforms.
It's about time. We've been waiting for that.
And tonight, I wear two hats. First is the, uh, City Councilman, and second is President of the Piedmont Sons of the American Revolution. Proclamation for Constitution Week 2014. Whereas the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, is a product of reflection and choice, embodying the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, not by men. And whereas, September 17th, 2014, marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this memorable anniversary and to the patriotic exercises that will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law, 915, guarantees the issue of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. This Constitution Week, we, the City of Milton, urge all citizens to study the Constitution and to express gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship in our republic, functioning under the superb body of laws, the Constitution of the United States of America. Now, Joe Lockwood, as Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaimed the week of September 17th, 2014, through September 23rd, 2014, as Constitution Week in the City of Milton, and asked our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. Presented to the Piedmont Chapter of the Georgia Society Sons of the American Revolution, Martha Stewart Bullock Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and the Chesta Remember the scene?
Yes. If our city clerk, please call the next item.
Our next item is a presentation of the City of Milton's conservation plan, which is being presented by Dr. Tom Daniels.
Um, you know what? I've still got a report here. Suzy, I'm sorry. Unless we moved. No? Okay. You know what? Number three. Sorry, Tom.
I just want to say Constitution Week is a very difficult item to follow. But I want to add, for your information, that I did fly out of Philadelphia this morning, where the Constitution, of course, was signed. And I invite you, if you haven't yet, come to Philadelphia and visit the Constitution Center. It really is a remarkable and wonderful site. I, first of all, would like to thank you for the opportunity to work on this conservation plan. I would also like to thank the city council for meeting with me and sharing your insights with me, and I also would like to thank the city staff for their help. You have a very good city staff here. You are very fortunate to live in such a pretty and very special community here in the City of Milton. And I think the challenge you face is, going forward, how do you keep it that way? One of the themes that came out in my discussions with the public and with the city council and others was the need to provide incentives to private landowners to keep their land Let me just summarize briefly what I was asked to do with this project. First, I was asked to identify the open space, parks, trails, floodplains, and farmlands that exist. And second was to look at potential opportunities for connectivity of green space, which is very important for recreation, wildlife, water quality, and working landscapes. Third, to identify progress so far to achieve land protection goals and objectives in city plans, especially your comprehensive plan and in your parks and rec plan. And by the way, I found these to be very good plans. And fourth, I was asked to suggest other land preservation tools. Let me give you just a brief snapshot of where Milton is now and where it looks like it's going. Today, you have a population of about 35,000. The city covers about 38 square miles, somewhere between 25 and 28,000 acres. The median household income is $116,000, which is more than twice the national average. And of course, as you know, in 2011, Milton was named as having the highest quality of life of any community here in Georgia. Milton is famous for its rural character. The horse appears on your logo and also on your vehicles for the city. You have good parks and trails, but your comprehensive plan projects that in 2030, you will have about 52,000 people. So, the challenge is, how do you accommodate this growth over time while maintaining open space, environmental quality, outdoor recreation, and the high quality of life that you enjoy? So, the first thing I did was look at, what has the pace of development been recently? And you can see that Milton has done well in recovering from the Great Recession of 2007 to 2009. In recent years, Milton has been issuing about 300 residential permits. And in talking with Kathy Field of the Community Development Department, she explained to me that about half of these permits are for townhomes or homes on smaller lots, and half are permits for homes on larger lots in more rural areas. And the Community Development Department estimates that, on average, each building permit equates to about one acre. So, you can see that in the last couple, three years, Milton has been developing at a rate of about 300 or more acres per year. If you were to extend this out over 16 years, that would be more than 4,000 acres of, of open land converted to residential development. Now, that is sort of what I would consider the, the outside estimate, because, of course, we're in a low interest rate environment. It looks like interest rates will be going up sometime in the not-too-distant future, and certainly, the national economy can change over time. But one of the recommendations I have is that you might consider trying to preserve roughly as much land as is being developed going forward. So, next, I looked at land ownership by parcel size. And if you look at parcels of greater than 10 acres, these are the parcels that are most attractive when we talk about land preservation. And in the 20, in the 10-acre and up category, there are about 13,000 acres that represent about 46% of the City of Milton. Of those 13,000 acres, about 11,000 of those are considered rural. Next, you can look at a map of the land ownership by parcel size. The darker the blue, the larger the parcel size. So, you can see the concentration of larger parcels is in the northern part and over towards the, uh, north, um, western part, over by Cherokee County. So, these would be the properties that would be the most attractive to, uh, preserve if landowners were interested. One final thing I want to mention about land preservation is that land preservation really enhances development. People like to be in communities where there is a good amount of preserved land, either private land or also, uh, public land. Next, I was able to obtain from Fulton County, uh, the properties in red you see here that are enrolled in the current use valuation program in the city. The current use valuation program is a voluntary program where landowners agree not to develop their land for 10 years in return for a reduced assessment for property tax purposes. And there are about 2,300 acres here in the city that are enrolled in the current use valuation program. Next, I looked at a number of incentives. I want to emphasize that all the incentives that I am talking about here are strictly voluntary. Willing buyer, willing seller, a landowner has to be willing and interested in doing this. Conservation easements is a program that is new to Milton, would be new to Milton. A conservation easement is a written agreement where a landowner agrees not to develop his or her land in return for a payment, or if the landowner wishes to donate a conservation easement, there are income tax benefits and also, uh, at the federal level and, uh, state, uh, income tax credits here in Georgia. Conservation easements have been very popular throughout the United States. Last year, the City of Milton created a transfer of development rights program where developers would offer to buy transferable credits from landowners in the AG1 district in return for permission to build at a higher density in Crabapple or also here in Deerfield. Limited development is a case where a landowner, say, owns 40 acres and says, "I only want to develop 10 acres of it," and then I would be interested in selling or donating a conservation easement on the remaining 30 acres. Conservation subdivision is a topic that has been discussed a bit here in Milton. It's a situation where a landowner would be allowed to cluster development potential on part of the property in return for placing a conservation easement on another part of the property. For example, let's say the con- the conservation subdivision requires 50% preserved open space. A landowner who has, say, 20 acres could put the number of units allowed on the 20 acres on 10 acres, and then put a conservation easement on the remaining 10 acres. The challenge in doing a conservation subdivision is the lots you would be creating would be too small for onsite septic. So, developers would need to use onsite, uh, community on-lot systems to do that. At the public forum we had back in July, I did meet a developer who said that he had done, uh, a conservation subdivision, I believe, in Forsyth County. So, it has been done in the area, and it may be, uh, something very attractive both to landowners and to developers. Fee simple acquisition is basically for the city acquiring property for parks and trails, and then you have a number of financing options, bonds, general funds, grants from state and federal programs, partnerships with private nonprofits. I'm a big believer in public-private partnerships in land preservation. And then impact fee, I understand you are looking at a parks and rec impact fee, uh, to help fund parks and trails acquisitions. So, on the private side, I think what you want to consider is a blend of three techniques. You have the transfer of development rights program already. My estimation is that, over the next 16 years, you probably will able, be able to preserve about 500 acres with the TDR program, because, uh, the way it works is for every five acres someone owns, they get four TDRs, and they can either use, a developer can eat, buy those and use those either for two additional units in Crabapple or four additional units here in Deerfield. So, four times 400 would be 1,600 units if they all went into Deerfield, or 800 units if they all went into Crabapple. And if you split the difference, um, that 1,200 units plus the underlying units, um, would equal about half of what I'm estimating your total development, uh, for residential purposes would be, roughly 4,800, um, houses. On the conservation subdivisions, I think if you enacted a conservation subdivision ordinance, and even if you made it voluntary rather than mandatory, I think you could have, um, the preservation of as many as 1,000 acres. Now, you have to understand that, in the case of conservation subdivisions, the land that gets preserved is usually natural area, whereas, one of the things I think you want to focus on is looking at the preservation of your horse farms, because that is really an iconic, uh, part of your landscape here. Uh, the horse people, I don't think are going to be so interested in conservation subdivisions, because that puts more people in, um, closer to them and, and causes some conflicts. So, um, that's where I would recommend you look at a purchase of development rights program, purchase of conservation easements. Um, you notice the cost, I ha- I put in there of up to 25 million, and there's a big unknown in there. And the big unknown is this: When you determine the value of a conservation easement, it has to be done by a professional appraiser who first estimates, what is the market value of that property if it were put on the market today? And then, what is the value of that property restricted just to open space or agricultural uses? To date, there has not been, uh, a conservation easement project in Milton. So, right now, we don't know for sure what the value of conservation easements are, is going to be, and they certainly are going to vary from property to property. However, in talking with people here, certainly, you have very valuable real estate. I think everybody recognizes that, and it could be that your real estate is easily worth, uh, $10,000 an acre for conservation easements. It could be 15. But what I would recommend is that the city put a cap of $10,000 an acre, because if you, if you try to pay full value, 20, 30, 40, $50,000 an acre, you simply aren't going to be able to preserve very much land. Also, for a landowner, let's say a landowner has property that appraises at $15,000 an acre, they can get 10- They can get $10,000 an acre in cash, plus they can get an additional $5,000 an acre in income tax deduction from the federal government as well as state income tax credits from the state of Georgia. I'm not suggesting, and I want to be very clear about this, I'm not suggesting that the city pony up $25 million. I'm suggesting that that is the outside limit and that you very much consider where you can find other sources of funding, federal government, state, private sources as well, and leverage that money as much as you can. Let me move on to talk about some of the trails. Here's a map of the future land use map from your comprehensive plan. And I think one of the things you want to think about is how can we connect green space? Because the better you can connect green space, the more services you're going to get in terms of wildlife, recreation, and water quality. And so I think the strategy could be this. And this also comes from your comprehensive plan. This is a map of your floodplains. The 100-year floodplains are in green and the 500-year floodplains in red. Already, the city has in place the ability to take conservation easement donations from landowners who have land in the floodplain as a way for them to meet their stormwater management requirements. And so this can be a very low-cost way for the city to obtain at least land preservation, obtain conservation easements in return for stormwater management. The other thing that the city has been looking at, and I think it's a very good idea, is also looking at utility rights of way as a part of the trail system, again, to connect green space. Here's a map of the current trail network. I'm not going to go into detail on that. And also, a map here of the proposed trail network in the Parks and Rec Plan. The real thing I want to point out in this case is if you look at Birmingham Park and if you look at North Point Park as well, those are what you can call hubs, and the idea is to connect the hubs with trails, with green space. So the more you can do that, again, I think the better you're going to be able to accommodate development going forward. So looking at the public land preservation, I think you can get a fair amount of land preserved. Hopefully, the landowners will also grant you trail easements across the property, too. That would be ideal at a very low cost to the city. But I think you're going to have to continue to do some land purchases for trails and parks as well. I don't think you're going to have to do quite as much as your Parks and Rec Plan suggested. They suggested 47 million. They also suggested that the city was 471 acres short of park space. I learned from Jim Craig that the city has been very successful in working out an agreement with Alpharetta to allow citizens of Milton to use the Alpharetta Parks, and I think that's partly a very good solution. So I think the parks you're looking at going forward are going to probably be smaller, more neighborhood-type-of-oriented parks. But again, the more you can connect land through trails, I think the better off you're going to be in accommodating development going forward. So let me summarize now with the recommendations. First of all, I think the city council should appoint a land preservation advisory committee to assist in educating landowners and the public about land preservation options. Second, the advisory committee could also help to identify land to preserve and assist the city in exploring financing options. Part of this idea comes from my own experience as having been staffed to an advisory committee in the county of Lancaster where I currently live. And I served as staff for nine years to an advisory board, and we had a wonderful array of people on that board. And we always had, for example, one of the county commissioners, and we always had somebody from the building industry. So we were very transparent, we were very upfront, there was no hidden agenda, and it was really a great way to bring together a lot of different viewpoints. The city, with input from the advisory committee and the general public, should determine a goal of how many acres of privately-held land and public land to preserve over the next 16 years. I've given you my opinion. What I'm really trying to do with that opinion is stimulate debate on your half and obviously stimulate some action. The city should identify priority lands for preservation along with funding options, and I do list some preservation areas that you might want to consider in my report. With potentially more than 4,000 acres to be developed in Milton over the next 16 years, again, I'm recommending that you try roughly to match the amount of land that would be developed with roughly equal amount of land preserved. The city should work with a qualified land trust, for example, the Georgia Land Trust, to preserve privately-owned lands through the purchase and donation of conservation easements. The city should continue to implement the TDR program. I think especially after you have the city hall built in Crab Apple, I think that will draw a lot of interest from the development community. I was very impressed with Crab Apple. I took many pictures of it that I'm going to be sharing with my students this year. The city should continue to study the use of conservation subdivisions as an option for landowners and developers. And the city should explore long-term financing options for land preservation such as local option sales tax from Fulton County, the sale of bonds. Obviously, right now, we're in a low-interest-rate environment, where borrowing money is attractive. And in addition, the city really should explore outside funding sources such as state and federal programs and national conservation organizations such as the Trust for Public Land, which works with parks and trails. The city staff should evaluate the use of floodplains for additions to the city trail system to help connect preserved lands, including parks and public schools. But I want to emphasize that one of the things that came out at the public meeting in July is the city really needs to do a better job of marketing the trail to residents. I asked people, you know, what they thought of the Milton Trail, and many people didn't even know where it was. You have 70 miles of sidewalks in the city, which is extensive. You also have about seven miles of unpaved road that are part of the Milton Trail. So I think, you know, some better PR would certainly help there. The city will need to expand its parkland over the next 16 years to keep pace with expected population growth, including both active and passive recreation areas. And I really do recommend that the city adopt a park and recreation impact fee to help pay for future park and trail acquisitions. The reality is, people who live in a community basically subsidize people who come into the community because people who live in the community have already paid for the infrastructure. And what you're asking the newcomers to do when you impose an impact fee on them is help pay for future parks and trails that their new demand really touches off. So that is my summary of the report. I've given copies to Chris and to Kathy Field, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Do we, do we have any questions? Greg Mark?
Yeah.
I'm assuming Chris will get us a copy of this.
I will. I wanted to make sure that there weren't any last-minute changes, but what I've got is the final, yes, I'll send it out.
Because I just, I have one general question. Obviously, if we were to do everything you said here and be successful at it, how long do you think that might take? Because I mean, it obviously depends on funding, but, you know, over what timeframe are you seeing communities be successful with plans like this?
I think it'll take you the full 16 years to do. So think long term. Stay in office for 16 years and see it through.
Can't.
All right. Well, again, thank you very much, Tom, for all your work and your presentation. So it's a pleasure working with you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, city. We'll move on to the next proclamation.
Next proclamation is recognizing Tom Lowe Day, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. I'm proud today to submit a proclamation for Tom Lowe, who's retired from the Fulton County Commission. This proclamation is titled Tom Lowe Day. Whereas Tom Lowe has served with honor and distinction as a District Four Fulton County Commissioner since 1974 and is the longest-serving member of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas, Tom Lowe advocated and supported a number of North Fulton County facilities, including the Abernathy Arts Center, the Dorothy Benson Multipurpose Senior Center, the Roswell Senior Center, Morgan Falls Park, North Fulton Service Center, John Ripley Ford's Big Tree Forest Preserve, and several branch libraries. And whereas, Tom Lowe was instrumental in the development of the 127-acre Chattahoochee Nature Center. And whereas, Tom Lowe served on a number of boards and commissions during his distinguished career, including the Atlanta Fulton County Water Resources Commission, Atlanta Fulton County Library Board of Trustees, Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority, and the Fulton County Pension Board. And whereas, we express our gratitude to Tom Lowe for his service and contributions to North Fulton County. Now therefore, I, Joe Lockwood, as mayor of the city of Milton, along with all the mayors of North Fulton County, proclaim October 1st, 2014, Tom Lowe Day in North Fulton County. This is given under our hand and sealed by the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 22nd day of September, 2014. Talk about staying in office for a long time. 16 years seems long. All right, city, if you want to sound the next item in the public hearings.
The next item under public hearing is consideration of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2014 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. This is Agenda Item Number 14248. First presentation was at the September 8th regular council meeting. Ms. Stacy English.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The budget amendments that we have before you are simply to right-size the budget based on activity to date and future projections until the end of this fiscal year, which will be next Tuesday. In the general fund, there are increases to the revenues and increases to the expenditures. Increases to revenues are $1,497,350, and increases to expenditures are $1,392,541, an overall net increase to fund balance of $104,809. I'm just going to do a highlight overview of the budget amendments themselves. If you have any detailed questions, I'll be happy to answer those. The revenue amendments, the highlights of the revenue amendments are as follows. The local option sales tax are coming in higher than anticipated, about $550,000 more than what we projected at mid-year. And that is due mostly to, I guess, increased consumer spending, more confidence in the economy. Motor vehicle taxes have also increased significantly as a result of House Bill 386. We are projecting $200,000 more than what is currently budgeted. Property taxes are anticipated to be about $370,000 higher than projections. That is a net of $440,000 increase for current taxes and a decrease of $70,000 in prior year taxes. We had a greater collection than what we anticipated last year, so prior year collections are obviously decreased from what we projected. Land disturbance fees and building permit revenues were increased by $106,700 and $50,000 respectively to account for higher-than-anticipated collections. Court administration fees, fines and forfeitures were also increased by a total of $140,000. And plan review fees are coming in around $82,000 higher than projected. Those are the highlighted revenue amendments. Highlighted expenditure amendments are an increase of $70,000 to the legal cost due to changing the defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan for city employees. Renovations to city hall to combine all the entrances into one main entrance is an estimated $22,600, and those funds are coming from the contingency line item that we have already budgeted. There is a new septic tank that is necessary for Fire Station 43. The current one has failed, so that needs to be replaced, and it's going to cost around $33,000. That is also being offset by a decrease to the contingency line item. And the largest amendment is a transfer of $1,330,651 from the general fund to the capital projects revenue bond fund to cover the acquisition of the city hall property of $945,651 and the second artificial turf field at Bell Memorial Park of $325,000. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Stacy, back on the permit fees, $82,000, that's our net amount. Is that correct?
That is plan review fees.
Plan review, that's 10 percent.
No, that is the city's full, what the city charges for plan review fees. That's not included in the split cost with the safe belt.
Okay.
LVP.
Yes. Land disturbance, plan review fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else here?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. Is there any public comment on this hearing?
There is not, sir.
Okay. I'll close the hearing. Discussion from council. Okay. We'll move on to the final public hearing.
This is the second public hearing for this item, consideration of the ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to adopt the fiscal 2015 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 14249. This was discussed at August 11th, 2014 council work session, also discussed at August 23rd special called work session. First presentation and first public hearing was held September 8th, 2014 at a regular council meeting. Mr. Chris Lagerblatt.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the second and final public hearing for the budget that you will consider later in this meeting for adoption for our fiscal year 2015. I'm going to take a very high-level presentation at this point, seeing as though we'll get into better detail here in a little bit, and recognizing that if I look to my left, there are speaker cards sitting there from a large member of the public that are not related to this topic, so they're related to the next ones, we'll try to get to it in fairly short order. What I'd like to tell you about the 2015 budget for the purposes of the public hearing is that, as with previous years, the foundation for our budget was based on three key financial factors: Sustainability of existing services, maintaining quality of life for constituents, citizens, and businesses through capital programming, and enhancement to services through operating initiatives. Set a different way we budgeted for the maintenance and operating function of the city, the day-to-day operations. We considered new initiatives and whether or not those would be appropriate based upon our plans and our strategic plan, whether or not we would fund those, as well as funding a capital plan over the life of seven years this year as opposed to five as in previous years. I can tell you that this budget is balanced at $24,386,240. Of that, $6.5 million roughly has been transferred to capital projects of assorted varieties, of which I'll get to here in a second. The city, where staff requested initiatives to be considered, the amount of $1,008. And in the balanced budget, there is a recommended fund from the city council of $802,000. Of that, $1,008, the two largest cost centers deal with the transition of our IT services into more of a cloud deployment as opposed to a local deployment, as well as the addition of two staffing people, two police officers in the police department. The special events fund, as you know, is one The special events fund, as you know, is one that we fund from hotel-motel tax largely, and the events that the city has delivered and will continue to deliver remains unchanged for fiscal year 15, and in fact, we think that we add some enhancements to it in the form of some additional festivals and community gatherings. Let you know as well that the capital improvement plan considers, as it does every year, the appropriate maintenance of our infrastructure, assets of bridges, roads, dams, and other facilities that we have to maintain. We are in a position where we do try to fund for capital vehicle acquisition with a cash purchase as opposed to having to accrue debt to go out and buy those vehicles, so we do maintain a vehicle replacement reserve in each department. We're able to, through a series of final decisions being made in the implementation of our new public safety radio system, decrease that line item by a half million dollars and appropriate that funding elsewhere because the actual deliverable, the actual project is coming in under budget, and as we start to hone that in, we're able to take those dollars and reappropriate them. I can tell you that the paving of the roads, as would be consistent with prior years to keep us on track with our PCI that we work towards, is funded. Some sidewalks have funded a road, a street lighting project on Green Road is funded in this budget, as well as some minor intersection improvements at Webb and Morris Road. That's, at this point, that's a high-level presentation of the budget. We'll get into the finer details later, but the big thing for the purpose of the public hearing is, again, I'll just restate it, that this budget's presented to the council and to the public, and it balances at $24,386,240. Be happy to take questions now, or save those up for when we actually work through it during the item under new business.
Any questions right now? Maybe a public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, close the hearing. Anything else on this item? Okay, let's move on to our zoning agenda. City Clerk, please read the zoning rules and sound the first item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for the meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the time remaining for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that their speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider this application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of U14-02, 14505 Batesville Road, by LRF Milton LLC, to operate a rural event facility, Section 64-1842. This is Agenda Item Number 14-247. First presentation was heard September 8th, 2014, Regular Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Mayor, before we begin, I will be recusing myself from this meeting based on the fact that my husband and I still own a lot adjacent to the property, and the city attorney has recommended that I recuse myself.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you have in front of you an area showing the parcel outlined in red. It shows the current zoning for this, which is Zoned AG1. Future land use map shows this area to be for agricultural equestrian and estate residential. Here's a copy of the revised site plan that was submitted to us on August 19th, and I'm going to share you some photos of the subject site. The subject site is Zoned AG1 Agricultural and developed with a 10,500-square-foot single-family residence and other accessory structures, built between 1910 and the present on 47.7 acres. There is also an existing 2,748 atrium event space recently constructed. Staff notes that the mayor and city council approved a use permit for a four-bedroom bed and breakfast on August 18, 2014. The bed and breakfast will be utilized to accommodate guests using the event facility. The applicant seeks a use permit for a rural event facility primarily utilizing the existing 2,748-square-foot atrium event space. The applicant is proposing to construct in addition to the atrium of 1,512 square feet for a total of 4,296 square feet. The applicant's revised letter of intent received by the Community Development Department on August 18th states the following, as it relates to the operation of the facility: One, the maximum capacity is proposed to be 250 guests. The hours of operation are proposed from 9:00 a.m. to midnight with music until 11:00 p.m. Following the 11:00 p.m. music termination, event attendees would have until 12:00 a.m. to acquire their vehicles from valet and vacate the events facility. Three, days of operation, seven days a week. Although the applicant anticipates that most events will be held Friday through Sunday, it will also make the facility available during the week for select corporate, political, and other events. All events will comply with the allowable sound levels provided by Sections 20-680 and 20-681 of the Code of the City of Milton. However, the applicant would be amenable to earlier closing times, Monday through Thursday, during the academic year, e.g., music until 10:00 p.m. and attendees vacating the facility by 11:00 p.m. Four, the last call. Last call for any alcoholic beverages will be 15 minutes prior to the termination of music at 11:00 p.m. Five, traffic. Depending upon the number of attendees, all events will have either one or two off-duty City of Milton or Fulton County police officers directing traffic in and out of the facility. Valet service will be mandatory for all events over 75 attendees. The applicant's site plan and letter of intent meets or exceeds the use permit standards as required by an agricultural event facility, except for three items discussed below. And of those three items, the first two relate to the following: the maximum number of attendees and the hours of operation will be evaluated by the mayor and city council on a case-by-case basis for each site to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. The applicant has proposed a maximum of 250 guests for each event. Staff is in agreement with this request based on the large size of the parcel and the location of the event facility located in the center of the property, and this number will be reflected in the recommended conditions. However, it's staff's opinion that the proposed time of midnight for ending events Friday through Sunday is too late and may have a negative impact on the surrounding properties. The mayor and city council recently approved a use permit for a similar operation pursuant to U13-04 located at 13895 Hopewell Road, which require the amplified sound cease at 10:00 p.m., and the use permit require the event to cease entirely at 11:00 p.m. Therefore, staff recommends the same requirements for the subject site, which will be included in the recommended conditions. In respect to hours of operation, Monday through Thursday, staff recommends that events end at 10:00 p.m. and amplified sound cease at 9:00 p.m. throughout the entire year. This condition will be included in the recommended conditions. This is the last item in which the mayor and city council need to address on a case-by-case basis, and this pertains to the location and dimensions of undisturbed buffers, if needed to ameliorate the visual and audio effects of the facility, to be evaluated and determined by the mayor and city council. The applicant's revised site plan does not provide for additional undisturbed buffers, but mentioned that the applicant has planted additional vegetation between the atrium and the property line to help ameliorate the noise. It is staff's opinion that based on the size of the property, 47.7 acres, the additional 20-plus acres for the entire site, the Little River to the west, existing heavy vegetation along the north property line of budding Taylor-Gun subdivision, Atlanta National Golf Course to the south, and lastly, preserving the rural view shed along both Batesville and Taylor Roads, undisturbed buffers are not required. Site plan analysis, the rural Milton overlay district, the proposed site plan meets the requirements of the rural Milton overlay district. In terms of city arborist comments, the proposed use permit will not impact any specimen trees based on the fact that there will be minimal improvements to the site. Public Works Department, stopping site distance profile is provided, and traffic memo states intersection site distance is adequate. Two, driveway width and radius returns within the right-of-way do not meet standards. There was a community zoning information meeting held on July 29, 2014. There were 27 people in attendance at the meeting. The following issues were brought up. Attendees were concerned about noise disturbing residents at Valmont subdivision. They were concerned about potential intoxicated drivers coming from events driving from the facility, coming from and driving into the facility. Concerned with the reduction of property values for adjacent and nearby properties. Residents stated that they would rather see a subdivision developed than an event facility. Residents questioned who would enforce the conditions of the use permit. The City of Milton Design Review Board conducted a courtesy review on August 5th. They felt that it was a good use of the property, and they wanted to make sure that parking was not visible from neighboring houses. A public participation plan and report was submitted on August 20th. The public participation meeting was held on August 13th at the proposed site. There were 11 people who signed in, but there were some who chose not to sign the sign-in sheet. Planning Commission reviewed this application, and they recommended, and they did it on August 27th, and they recommended conditional approval, 3 to 2, with the following recommended conditions: to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of their property as follows. Under the hours of operation, they felt that, and you can see the strike-throughs here, that it should be Friday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., with the ceasing of amplified sound and serving of alcohol at 11:00 p.m. I'm sorry, at 10:00 p.m. Subsection 2, they felt that Sunday through Thursday, it should be 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with the ceasing of amplified sound and serving of alcohol at 9:00 a.m. Also, they felt that amplified sound of music shall be located within the enclosed portion of the atrium. That all delivery shall enter off of Batesville Road, and when portable toilets are used, they shall not be viewed from Batesville Road and Taylor Road. Use permit considerations, the proposed development is located in the agricultural equestrian estate residential AEE land use category. The proposed use permit is permitted in the AG1 agricultural district, which is an acceptable zoning district for the AEE land use category. In addition, the following plan policies are consistent with the proposed use. We will support programs that retain, expand, and create businesses that provide a good fit for our community's economy. We will encourage the preservation of natural resource areas and preserve contiguous green open space development of land. We will encourage development that is sensitive to the overall setting of the community. The subject site is adjacent to the Little River, which is the border between the City of Milton and Cherokee County to the west. To the north is Taylor-Gun subdivision, to the east is Valmont subdivision with minimum one acre lots. To the south is the Atlanta National Golf Club. It is staff's opinion that the proposed rural event facility is compatible with adjacent and nearby properties if approved with the recommended conditions. The proposed uses effect on the traffic flow of vehicular and pedestrian along adjoining streets should be minimum as the frequency and timing occurs during off-peak times during the weekend hours and typically not during the week. In addition, traffic will be entering and exiting on Batesville Road and not on Taylor Road with our existing single-family subdivisions, which should minimize the impact on these subdivisions. The required number of parking spaces is one space per 2.5 attendees. The applicant has indicated a total of 120 parking spaces for the facility, which is 20 more than the required 100 parking spaces. The applicant has also indicated that valet parking will be required for events with more than 75 attendees. Parking is located in the central part of the site and cannot be seen from either Batesville or Taylor Roads or adjacent properties. Based on the site plan submitted, the proposed use, staff recommends no additional buffers on the site based on the size, existing tree coverage, and the intent to preserve the rural view shed along the roadways. In addition, there is already a requirement of a 50-foot undisturbed buffer and 25-foot non-improvement setback along the Little River on the west boundary of the site. The applicant has not indicated any additional lighting on the site. If lighting is proposed, it must comply with the night sky ordinance. The proposed ingress and egress to the event facility is via Batesville Road, and thus will have minimum direct impact on the subdivisions along Taylor Road. Conclusion, if approved with the recommended conditions, the proposed rural event facility is consistent with the City of Milton 2030 future land use plan and policies. Therefore, staff recommends U14-02 be approved conditional. Recommended conditions, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows: A, to a rural event facility; B, the number of attendees shall not exceed 250 people for any single event; the hours of operation shall be the following: Friday through Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. with the ceasing of amplified sound at 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with the ceasing of amplified sound at 9:00 p.m. To the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on August 19th, said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance, all other city applicable ordinances, and those conditions prior to the approval of land disturbance permit. A 10,536-square-foot structure, the existing house, a 4,296-square-foot atrium includes the addition, and all other buildings shall not be expanded in size as depicted on the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on August 19th. Location, number parking spaces shall be as depicted on the revised site plan received on August 19th. All events with more than 75 attendees shall be required to have valet service and provide a minimum of one off-duty police officer for such events. Access to the site shall be subject to the approval of the City of Milton Public Works Department. Driveways shall meet required intersection site distance and shall be certified by a professional engineer. Driveways shall be improved within the right-of-way. That is my presentation.
Okay. I'm going to speak. Any questions now for Kathy?
Kathy, I was wondering what the purpose of the restriction on the existing building was. Is it specifically to control how much space is being utilized for the events facility? Is it to limit the amount of space? Is it, what was the idea there?
Well, I guess not to expand the use to any more than what is currently being proposed, which is to use the atrium basically as the event space for up to 250 people.
Right.
But not to expand it anymore. They would, I would see that as an expansion of the use permit, and they would have to come back. We're zoning it to, the use permit is based on the-
Okay, so not so much a restriction other than just setting the limits for this particular use permit?
Right, that is correct.
I got it, that makes more sense.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll talk this public hearing with those in support of the applicant, or the applicant himself, that would like to present.
Our first speaker is Rich Kay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Rich Kay. I'm an attorney with the law firm-
I'm an attorney with the law firm of Taylor English Duma, located at sixteen-hundred Parkwood Circle, Suite 400, Atlanta, Georgia, 30339. I'm here with Sam and Joe Ivy, who are the trustees for the trust that owns the property. We represent the applicant, LRF Milton LLC, that is made up of members of the Ivy family. With respect to its application for a special use permit to operate a rural or agricultural events facility under Milton Code Section 64, 1842. I also wanted to add just very quickly that the Hopewell site was not approved under this code section. In fact, it's under five acres, so it really is not an applicable comparison. I will be brief with my comments so that I may have an opportunity to address concerns of the property's neighbors who may not be in support of this application. The property is currently owned by trusts established in favor of the heirs of the George H. Ivy Jr. Trust. Until he passed earlier this year, Mr. Ivy was a committed steward of the property for well over seventy years. Mr. Ivy's heirs intend to follow in George H. Ivy Jr.'s footsteps as a curator and guardian of this rural and pastoral property. The entire Little River's farm property is approximately eighty acres and is comprised of farmland, wooded acres, and landscape grounds. It contains a small lake, an equestrian barn, and other structures supporting its current farm use. The council has already approved a B&amp;B special use permit for the main house on the property. Mr. Ivy, Joe Ivy, and his wife will be living on that property. This council, well, our application for a rural events facility fits squarely within the City of Milton's 2030 comprehensive land use plan by preserving the property's rural and pastoral character, and certainly with the presentation we heard today by Dr. Daniels. The events use of the property very importantly permits a next generation of Ivies to continue to live on the property and make it their permanent home. In order for the property to be self-sustaining and preserve its current rural character, the trustees and the beneficiaries of the trusts require a commercial use to generate sufficient income to pay for such things as taxes and upkeep on the farm. The applicant believes that the events operation would provide a level of income sufficient to maintain the property, as it will be a unique venue, wedding parties, or special event participants can not only hold their special events there, but also spend the night before, during, or after these events. For the sake of brevity, I would like to cut to the chase with respect to the difference between what the staff and planning commission are recommending with respect to hours of operation and what the applicant believes it requires in order to make the events facility financially viable. The applicant requested that the hours of operation for the facility be from 9:00 AM to midnight with live or artificial music until 11:00 PM for Friday through Sunday. Attendees not spending the night at the bed and breakfast would vacate the premises by 12:00 midnight. And for Monday through Thursday during the academic year, music until 10:00 PM, and attendees vacating the premises by 11:00 PM. During the summer months, normal longer hours would apply. These hours of operation are absolutely necessary to make this facility a competitive one with other similar venues. We will need to remember that during the hot summer months, the actual wedding ceremony can't start until 6:30 or 7:00 because it's just too hot. And potential renters of the facility will not pay the going rate for a facility that can only be used for three hours. In support of these hours that we have been requesting in the application, we submitted to the planning commission an Excel spreadsheet surveying twenty-one competitive venues that have similar or later hours of operation. We also have a letter from a popular and successful event planner that supports the applicant's requested hours of operation. Even though we performed a decibel check during the neighborhood meeting, showing that the decibel levels at the property edge were far less than the limits of the City of Milton Code Section 2680, even at concert decibel levels in the atrium where amplified music would be located exclusively, it appears that both the planning commission and staff, as well as the neighbors of the Valmont subdivision, believe that noise will be an issue and therefore want to limit the hours of operation because of that. In an effort to accommodate everyone with their noise concerns, the applicant has filed a revised application and letter of intent with substantial revisions to our original application, offering significant accommodations with respect to noise and other concerns. First, we removed the thirty-two-acre Easterly property tract between the atrium and Taylor Road completely from the application, creating almost a quarter of a mile of buffer between the atrium and the Valmont subdivision. Further, by removing this tract, we have relocated the parking, which was originally situated on this track and in view, an airshot of Valmont, to a hidden area which could not be viewed from Taylor Road or Batesville Road on the property that we're applying for. I also wanted to assure the council that these thirty-two acres that we've set aside are not subject to development at this time and are currently governed by a current use contract with the state of Georgia for the next three and a half-plus years. Secondly, as an accommodation, we have agreed to construct an enclosed atrium extension, which will further buffer the sound with glass and solid walls. Although the sound levels were well within Milton Code requirements, this extension of the atrium will reduce the sound to a negligible level equivalent to less than a whisper in the Valmont subdivision. In fact, during our tests without the new addition, one of the neighbors confirmed that his spouse heard absolutely nothing from her kitchen in a home that, off of Taylor Road that abutted our property. Still further, the fire marshal has requested that each wall of the new atrium have at least a twenty percent door-like opening, which in this case would be approximately eight feet high by eight feet, four inches wide. This opening seems to be of great concern to the Valmont residents because they feel that such an opening would cause some sound to travel to their property. So in order to once again accommodate the Valmont residents, we would locate the openings of the rear wall of the atrium, which faces the Valmont subdivision to the far left of the wall, instead of directly into the subdivision. This far end, the left end, or the northern end, when you look at the Valmont subdivision, is blocked by woods and trees. Secondly, we have done some additional research on sound-absorbing acoustical curtains that could be used to cover these openings and still meet the requirements of the fire code. These acoustical curtains will dampen the sound twenty to twenty-five decibels. So even though it's all going to be blocked, any of those openings would be covered by these acoustical dampening curtains. Again, without this additional enclosure and the openings covered with noise-dampening material, the sound emanating to the Valmont subdivision during our tests at the neighborhood meeting did not even register on the forty-decibel meter at the property lines of Valmont. We also prepared to offer, if the council deems it necessary, to actually limit the sound to forty-five decibels at the Taylor Road property line during the hours of 10:00 to 11:00 PM Friday through Sunday and 9:00 to 10:00 Monday through Thursday. So while we do have that music going till 11 o'clock, we would agree that we would keep the decibel levels at the edge of our property to forty-five decibels. The code section permits sixty-five and sixty. Besides the sound, we addressed the safety concerns of the Valmont subdivision by moving the parking off of the thirty-two-acre tract, so that the egress and ingress would not be close to Taylor Road, but would be in the center of the property and give a much longer field of sight up and down Batesville Road. We are also having off-duty police officers directing traffic, valet parking, and we've also agreed that anyone that contracts with us must sign, as part of their agreement, an agreement that we can, the valets can keep any keys of anyone that we see that is intoxicated. Lastly-
Respectfully, Mayor, ten minutes has elapsed. The lapse so far.
Oh, you wrapping it up?
Yeah, I'm wrapping it up. We believe that our application, yeah.
And I say that, I'm sure the council will allow a little bit more time, and it's like we've got a big audience, so we may have to give both sides some more time, but if you're wrapping it up now-
Fifteen seconds, yeah.
Give you another minute, and then we'll, we can add more time later if both sides need some.
Right. The other thing, too, is that they were worried about trucks coming in off of Taylor Road, leaving the property. All of our trucks for the events facility would be coming in through the Batesville Road entrance. Lastly, we believe that our application as applied for fits well within the overall City of Milton 2030 comprehensive land use plan by preserving its rural character. We believe that if we are unable to operate our facility during the hours requested, we will not be able to make this venue a viable one, and therefore, we cannot promise that we will be able to maintain its rural and pastoral character. We hope that you look favorably with respect to our application and our position with respect to hours of operation. Thank you.
All right, Sudi, how many, approximately, parts do we have?
We have a total of ten in support, and that includes those that will, four to read into the record in support. We have a total of ten in opposition, which includes four for me to read into the record.
Okay.
So six speakers on each side, about.
Okay. We want to start maybe at ten minutes and give each side that would give folks time to speak. Anybody got a problem with that? Okay, we want to give everybody an opportunity to speak.
Do you want to, since we've heard a full ten minutes of support, do you want to hear ten minutes of, should we extend it, I guess, after we hear ten minutes of opposition and then go back to the support? Are you wanting to extend just the support at this point to a full twenty minutes?
I'm fine with doing that.
Okay. All right, I'll just keep track of it.
So we're going to add another ten to the support?
Yeah, and then to both sides, a total of twenty minutes.
All right, our next speaker comes from Mr. Ken Morton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Ken Morton, and I live at 14732 Taylor Valley Way. I've been asked to speak on behalf of Taylor Glen subdivision. I've lived in our community my entire life and have been here for, my family's been here for many generations. As you know, the Little River Farm is a landmark, it's been a wonderful feature of Milton for many years. So when we heard about the news, we wanted to make sure, of course, that we understood the impact with noise, traffic, and appearance. And we believe that the concessions that they have made in order to satisfy those concerns are certainly satisfactory and good. We're aware that when the event happened several weeks ago, I went down there and listened closely in front of Valmont and was surprised at how low the noise level was. And of course, there at the end of Taylor Glen, also where I live, how low the sound was. I think this would be a great addition. We also support their desire to keep it open till 11:00 with the understanding on the weekends that it would be reduced after 10:00 and then reduce the sound after 9:00. We feel like they've made great concessions in making sure that sound barriers are in place and that further things are going to be put in place with trees and so forth to prevent further sound there along Taylor Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, can you call the next person?
Our next public comment comes from Fritz Holzgriff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Fritz Holzgriff. I live at 14743 Taylor Valley Way in the Taylor Glen subdivision. I live in the cul-de-sac nearest the Little River property. My comments represent many of those from our neighbors. We've all been very impressed with the attention paid by the, the attention paid by the Ivy family to the potential impacts in the community and the efforts that they've made to mitigate all such impacts. Further, we think it critically important to balance the range of potential options for this property, and they have identified one that appears to be economically viable and one that will keep the character that's so important to our part of Milton. Arguably, the proposal goes a long way in preserving the character, and with this unique venue in mind, something that's probably got a longer-term economic viability. We support the use of the specific times that they proposed even this evening with the extended evening hours to allow them to be competitive in the market in which they operate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, can you call the next?
Our next speaker is Jack Linden.
Good evening, Councilman Jack Linden, 14810 East Bluff Road in Milton. I'm speaking tonight as the chairman of the Milton Grows Green Environmental Sustainability Committee, and I want to start by reading our one-sentence mission statement. Milton Grows Green is a citizen volunteer committee advocating for the responsible management of growth by conserving and protecting resources while preserving Milton's heritage and natural landscape for future generations. This is the primary reason that the committee is in favor of this proposal. We discussed it at our meeting this past month, and we're unanimously in favor of supporting this use of this property. We had the pleasure earlier this evening of listening to Professor Daniels talk about the ways that Milton can try to maintain its rural character. And some of those methods he talked about cost money. Direct purchase of land, conservation land, purchase of land for parks and trails, purchase of conservation easements, all take a lot of money. There are some things that don't cost money. TDRs don't cost the city any money. Conservation subdivision ordinance wouldn't cost the city any money. And the best thing would be when citizens volunteer not to turn their property into subdivisions. When I was, when I first heard about this about a month ago at the, at the meeting of the planning board, I was surprised to hear this, and I thought this was a great idea. And I said to myself, you know, if we could get about eighty more people, eighty is the number of parcels in Milton of twenty acres or more. We get eighty more people to do this, we wouldn't have a rural Milton problem. So we are very much in favor of this. We hope that the city will do whatever is possible to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Ms. Kathleen Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Cathy Johnson, and I live at 385 Taylor Glen Drive in Milton, in the Taylor Glen subdivision. I have submitted an affidavit, and I'm speaking on behalf of my neighborhood of Taylor Glen, which includes sixty-four houses and families and over two-hundred residents. Taylor Glen residents want you to know that we fully support the use permit requested by Little River Farms, including the amplified music being played until 11:00 PM on weekends and 10:00 PM on weekdays. I have also sent you a petition signed by more than a hundred-and-sixty Milton residents who also fully support this use permit and the music times. Taylor Glen is the neighborhood that is the closest to Little River Farms. Several of our property owners share a property line with Little River Farms, and is actually, if you look on the map enclosed in your packet, it is actually closer, these houses are actually closer to the houses in Valmont. And this is would be the event facility, and these, several of these houses in our neighborhood is closer than the Valmont neighborhood. And we are all in support of this. Not one of our Taylor Glen neighborhoods, neighbors are bothered by the sound coming from the facility, including on the night about a month ago when they had a private wedding, which is what the Valmont neighbors were concerned about the sound that night. No one in my neighborhood were bothered by the sound whatsoever. And it just seems like these neighbors, our neighbors that are closer to the site than the Valmont neighbors, if we are not bothered by the sound, it's hard for us to understand why they are, especially when, if this use permit is not granted, the alternatives, which were stated to me by the attorney for LRF, is if they're not able to have the sound until 11:00 PM on weekends and 10:00 on weekdays, the only alternatives are either to sell the property for development, which they were told that there could fit sixty new homes on the eighty-acre property, or they, the possibility- on the eighty-acre property, or they, the possibility of turning it into industrial farm with cattle, chickens, and pigs. Now, I will tell you, Taylor Glen and all of the neighbors, nobody wants a pig farm. The smell, the waste, all the problems with the pig farm and even the chicken farm. So faced with those two alternatives, either the sixty new homes or the, or the pig farm, we would definitely choose the rural events facility that they're proposing. And it fits in exactly what Mr. Daniels was talking about in the Milton Conservation Plan. Just real quick on the sound, the attorney had talked about the decibel level and it was measured below forty at the Taylor Road on the side of the farm. And that was without the three-walled extension of the atrium and without the sound curtains. I mean, so I think the sound would be below forty decibels once they put that up. And I just don't see how that sound, it could be a problem, especially when the ordinance states that it could be sixty to sixty-five decibels. That's, that's basically putting a stricter standard on them and telling LRF, listen, you can't have this property on this music on above forty decibels. But I, Cathy Johnson, living in Taylor Glen, I can blast my music to sixty or sixty-five decibels and I would be within the ordinance, but they can't do it at forty decibels. It just doesn't seem fair and it doesn't seem just. And with Constitution Week this week, when we are supposed to follow the rule of law and the rule of law being the ordinance with the decibel level, it seems like we should give them the same standard we would get at anybody else in Milton. So also want to state that sixty new homes with sixty new possible leaf blowers at decibel levels of ninety to a hundred decibels would be far worse than forty decibels of music occasionally. In conclusion, I know that many of you are constantly asked by residents, can't you do something about all of this new development and all of the bulldozers? And many times I do understand that you say, no, there's nothing I can do. These people can develop their land and there's nothing I can do. But this time with this farm, you can say yes.
One minute remaining.
And I did do something. I saved that farm from being another subdivision by allowing this rural events facility. And those Milton residents, as well as I, would thank you very much if you could do that. And I thank you for my time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, respectfully, I ask folks, as our rules are read out, if you can hold your applause. Sudi, you want to call?
I've got four to read into the record in support.
Okay.
And that is all.
How much time do we have left?
Opposition, okay.
Yeah, yeah, let's move to the opposition.
You guys are okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
We'll read the ones into the record if we have time.
Okay, that's all, you just got four to read in. We don't have any more?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep it to twenty minutes, so there's no more public, there's just four to be read.
Okay, yeah, let's move to the opposition and then you can read those in the record.
Our first comment comes from William Willett.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and residents of Milton. I do have people pamphlets I'd like to pass up to the council members. My name is William Willett. I live in 11443 Valmont Lane, located in the Valmont subdivision, directly across from Little River Farms on the Taylor Road. I'm here representing tonight the majority of the Valmont residents. There are several points we wish for you to consider when making your final decision about this permit. As residents of Valmont, we believe in the right of the property owner to use their property as a manner they see fit. While we are not thrilled about the thought of an event facility next door with certain restrictions, we do believe it could be an acceptable solution to the owner's dilemma of how to keep his farm. One, one of the many reasons, one of the reasons many of us moved, moved to rural Milton is to have a peaceful place to escape our daily busy lives. We appreciate the fact our homes are far enough apart that we can't see inside our neighbors' homes. This privacy creates in our homes and our backyards and the, and of course, a unique tranquility and peace here. Valmont has been all those things and more. It has provided a peaceful atmosphere, a large lots to enjoy privacy from our neighbors, but still enjoy community and not be that far off from civilization. This permit in its current state destroys the serenity that we love about our neighborhood. And we would like the council to nodify the permit as it stands, as we designed it would change our way of life. To begin, I would like to address a number of points that Mr. K, the applicant's lawyer, has made that I feel have been misleading. First, I would like to address the parcel of land that was removed from the permit. While this property, this thirty-two acres of land, or is thirty-two acres of land, it is long and narrow. Because of this, as you can see from this first picture that we provided atop, there is a direct line of sight to the event facility. And as you can also see from this event facility, it is mostly open. It's difficult to see from this picture, but there, it's, the only thing supporting the walls are the beams, right? So you have at least eighty percent of the pavilion open. So when the planning commission talks about placing the amplified music within the pavilion, there's not much you're actually placing it in. You're just putting it inside a few beams. So in other words, once, one wall will have at least ninety percent of, ninety percent of it open. There's only four studs holding up the roof of the, roof of the location or the pavilion. The land, if you look at it, the land is also below the elevation of the pavilions and the homes within Valmont, allowing for a direct line of sight. In addition, the land between the Valmont and the event facility is open pasture, pasture lane with a smattering of newly planted trees and provides no buffer or deterrent of sound traveling from the applicant's pavilion to the Valmont subdivision. While thirty-two acres sounds like a lot of land, because of the land's shape, elevation, lack of trees, it does not diffuse sound, any sound from the pavilion to the Valmont subdivision as he would like you to believe. Secondly, Mr. K has stated on the record that during the sound tests of the pavilion conducted for the Valmont residents, that the music now is, quote, blasted to a level that would not be tolerable for guests inside the pavilion. He stated this level met to the sixty-five decibel limit at the edge of the LRF property, and I guess even perhaps less than forty. During Mr. Ivy's wedding on the eight-twenty-two, the music was played so loud that you could hear intelligible words on my back deck. And if we look at the second Google Maps picture, you can see where the events facility is. And then I'm actually on the back of the subdivision. And then it was, I could hear this on the back of my deck. So you're talking almost twice the distance of the Valmont homes directly on Taylor Road. And if I could hear it behind my house, you can only imagine that those individuals on the road could hear it within their house. I'm not a sound engineer. I don't know why Taylor Glen cannot hear it. But for whatever reason, the way the acoustics were at that time, we could. And that goes thirty percent of our resident, residents could hear it inside their house and an additional forty percent could hear it outside. And that's including myself, I'm double as far away. And I think that also goes back to show that Mr. K is incorrect as far as what a tolerable sound could be heard within a pavilion. Because when he tested, they blasted the music to a point where it'd be painful for users in the pavilion to hear and you couldn't hear it at the property line. And yet, two weeks later, when there was a party, Mr. Ivy's wedding, it was played much louder and you could hear it all the way across the subdivision and into people's houses. And again, I don't know why Taylor Glen can't hear it. I'm not a sound engineer at that part. In addition, that night, the music went on to, and I understand it was a private event, but the music went on past two o'clock in the morning. The police were called multiple times from several houses, starting around ten AM, those that could hear inside their houses. And it still continued past two, two AM. And that's one of the reasons we have problems with the noise coming from that pavilion. Thoroughly, I'd like to talk about the email that Mr. K sent to the neighbors and subdivisions and organizations trying to gain greater support for the facility, which of course he has the right to do. But the content of the emails was misleading. First, he states that the pavilion is fully enclosed. And you should also have a copy of that email as well. And that is just misleading, misleading and trying to gain support. Because the atrium is not fully enclosed and it goes to the same thing with the amplified music the planning commission was talking about. The atrium is almost fully open, right? It only has, what, probably thirty-two beams holding it up? Then he suggests that the only options for the property are to sell to the development or a developer and starting an industrial farm. Not only does he never mention the industrial farm would acquire additional permits as well, he never mentions the potential obstacles that they would encounter trying to get permits to run a large farm that has a large stream running through the back of the property and dealing with all the feces and everything else that would come from these animals and the EPA problems. I believe these are only distractions, trying to gain support and mislead other residents and drive them into fear of trying to push the LRF facility to be fully enclosed so that they can have, maintain our current environment. Lastly, in order to debunk our concerns of what the impact of the rural facility might be for our neighborhood, Mr. K and the applicant have gone, have on a number of occasions asked for a professional opinion on how our land value might be affected, what the noise level at the property line would be and how the analysis of traffic might change. However, when it comes to the changes being made on the pavilion design that he's speaking of, adding the drapes, adding the extra atrium walls, there is no sound engineer required, right? He's just saying, with his best guess and with his architects drawing up the, the additional features, that'll abate the sound from our subdivision. There's, it's, we're supposed to have a professional opinion, but he's a professional, representing his client and he's not even doing it for himself. And these points are not to attack the applicant, Mr. Ivy, or the lawyer, Mr. K. I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of the opposing point of view and the mistakes that he is representing and misleading. During the planning commission on the meeting on eight-twenty-seven, the Valmont residents requested that on weeknights, Sunday through Thursday, the facility be closed at nine AM or nine PM with music and alcohol stopping one hour earlier. We ask these constraints be extended one hour on Friday and Saturdays. Many of us have children and must be up early in the morning and we also, a lot of us work downtown, which means we have to get up very early to meet, beat the traffic, as we all know is very bad, through four hundred. Recently, this council approved a use permit for a similar operation pursuant to U-1304 located at thirteen eight ninety-five Hopewell Road. This permit required the amplified sound to cease at ten PM and the events to cease at eleven PM. The planning commission used these defaults for this application, however, the majority of the residents close to this location actually approved the use, whereas the Valmont residents do not. In addition, even though it's approved under a different permit, this location is enclosed. So there is not nearly the effect of the surrounding residents as it is an open facility which LRF is proposing. If this, in addition, if this approved, if the, excuse me, in addition, the approved location is closed, whether it's not, please take into consideration, when considering whether to apply the same time limits. The Valmont residents believe the planning commission recommendation at hours operation are not suitable if the applicant refuses to enclose the pavilion. While the applicant must meet the sixty-five decibel noise ordinance limit, we do not believe this is the full intent of the noise, noise ordinance. In section forty-six one thirty-seven of the Fulton County Ordinance's Section A states, "It shall be unlawful for any person to continue or cause to be made or continue any loud, unnecessary, unusual noise, or any noise which annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others in the county." In section twenty-six, six fifty-nine of the Milton City Ordinance, it states, "It is hereby declared that the city, to be the city's policy to minimize the exposure of citizens to the psychological and psychological dangers of excess noise and to protect and promote and preserve the public health, safety, and general welfare. It is the express intent of the city council to control the noise level in manner which promotes commerce, the use, the value and enjoyment of property, sleep, repose, and the quality of environment." Normal ambient sound within our subdivision is forty decibels. At times, there are cars that could go by and it could be loud, but these are all passing. The ninety-five, ninety-five percent of the time, they go by within a few seconds. These random sounds are temporary and not a constant sound invasion that lasts for hours. Where is the value and enjoyment of property, sleep, and repose, and a quality environment when you can't go outside without hearing a party next door? The ordinance was created for if we have amplified music entering our, oh, excuse me. Forty decibels is at a level which you might expect to have a light breeze, hearing the rustling leaves, and have a general calm.
Sir, sir, hang on just one second. Mr. Mayor, I just want to bring up the fact that this, this person that's speaking has used more than half the time and you've got at least another half dozen that want to speak. It's totally your call as to whether or not you allow him to continue to use up the twenty minutes or if you want to spread it around.
Okay, all right. Ed, I would probably just have to keep that in mind now that we do have some more. Again, when we get to the end, I don't mind adding a couple of minutes, just give everybody a chance, but.
Sure, I'll do, zip through a little quicker, skip some points. But I ask you, how it does not affect property values? If someone comes to an open house and hears a party rock anthem playing in the background with intelligible lute lyrics, how could this not influence their choice to buy in our neighborhood? Who would want to listen to a neighbor's party of potentially offensive lyrics a few days a week on their back deck if they had a choice to buy elsewhere? The applicant did not have a realtor state, or the applicant did have a realtor state, there would be no impact to home values. But that was when they did the sound test originally, where you couldn't even hear the noise on the Valmont residences. We did have our realtor, Dan Bangs, and he does believe that that would impact, and he's a licensed realtor, would impact the home values of our properties. And I actually referenced something you wrote, Mayor Lockwood, back on December first of 2013, that individual property rates are essential to a way of life. The city of Milton cannot and would not ever force a property owner into a decision that negatively affects their land value. And I know that was in reference to developments going on, but it's the same thing with this permit that's going on here. If you allow them to do this in an open facility, it'll affect our land value. Nobody's going to want to go out to one house in our subdivision, another one a mile down, and listen to potential lute lyrics and other things that they don't want their children to do. Part of the reason we moved out to Milton was to get away from that stuff. And I, I think I'll just follow up, just to give other people some more time, is that we're not against the LRF facility. We think it's great. We would love to see it succeed. The only thing that we are asking is that they enclose it and keep the noise to a minimum so that it doesn't impact our lives on our home value.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next comment comes from Claudette Cunnold.
Good evening. I'm Claudette Cunnold. I live at eleven four fifty-three Valmont Lane. And I'm also here speaking on behalf of the neighborhood. I'm an interior designer, licensed interior designer. And I know that if you fully enclosed this facility, it would really reduce the noise level. We have presented that to Mr. K. We've presented that to Mr., both Mr. Ivies in request that that be done. They say that it's too expensive and that type of thing. It's really not, on the, on the front end, you would incur the cost. But if they would completely and fully enclose that facility, put in a sprinkler system, which is what they argue is the most expensive portion of that, then we would not be hearing that noise and hearing that sound. I will state that on the night that Mr. Ivy had his wedding, we did hear lute lyrics. If our children had been outside, these were completely inappropriate for our children to hear. And I know that you wouldn't want your children hearing these lyrics and they were clear as day. They were not just muffled or anything. They were very clear on our properties. We ask that you do keep at least the recommendations for the earlier hours that were presented by the planning commission. We don't feel that this needs to be open any later. They don't need to serve alcohol any later. And they don't need to have the amplified sound outside of that facility. We request that facility be enclosed if they're going to do it. We're fine with them doing an event facility if they take into consideration our needs and, and things which they haven't at this point. The trees that they did plant were very small and very short. It will take five years for those tree to reach a height that will have any impact on the sound coming across due to the trees being planted at the lowest level of the property and the event facility sitting up much higher on that property. So just please consider everything that we've said here tonight as you vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Don Fritz.
I'm Don Fritz. I'm in Edford, Jason.
Do you have a comment card, Sudi?
Is that Jason Moore?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Jason Moore. I live at 11503 Valmont Lane. And I'm going to use my time to read an email that I sent to each of you on Thursday of last week. "I'm one of the neighboring Valmont residents who would like to support the events facility. I was at the meeting on August thirteenth where they played the music and presented their plan. their plan. I listened to their attorney, their realtor, their so-called sound expert, and the Ivy family members themselves. They talked about changes from the original proposal, as we all heard, which one of the main things was a solid wall with double-pane windows and a fireplace on one end. The plan, at that point, the plan was still to leave the three remaining walls open, meaning openings would be covered with plastic, is what they said. When asked why they couldn't enclose the entire facility, all four sides, they said it was due to cost. About two hundred thousand dollars was the number they said. Leaving there, I felt the family was truly trying to work with us to minimize the impact to the community. The sound, which is my main concern, seemed to be addressed. I really would prefer an enclosed facility with all amplified sound inside, but maybe one end would help. The ninety decibels inside, which is way louder than they said it would ever be, excuse me, was barely heard at the property line. Wait till this weekend, they said, when you'll see a live event, and it won't even be this loud. So I moved on and almost forgot about the planned wedding event until that night, and I'll tell you, I didn't need a sound expert at my house to tell me that I can hear every word of every song in my backyard at a real live event. Something, they said, would not be possible. I feel there's some confusion at the planning commission meeting, and again, tonight, the proposed facility is not fully enclosed. They implied that, and as you can see in the attached email I, I sent to ones, you already have it on record, to the Taylor Glenn residents to urge their support, they again misrepresented the actual proposal presented to the planning commission. Last Thursday, as we closed in on the final vote, they proposed adding sound dampening curtains to the opening on three sides of the building. It's another positive step, but still not to a standard that guarantees amplified sound remains inside the building. This is another effort that should prevent sound traveling to our property. The problem is, there's no way to know for sure, and if it turns out they're wrong again, it'll be too late for the city to do anything about it. In fact, you heard that the police weren't able to do anything that night. It's my understanding that many of you have seen the Bootylicious video. I live up the street and further from the property, and my backyard faces away. As you saw, what the applicant and their so-called expert said is very different from the way it actually happened. At the August meeting, Joe Ivy laid out the expectations for the events facility. Their focus would be on high-end weddings in the fifty to sixty to seventy thousand dollar range. The goal is to have sixty or more events per year. That's three million to four point two million dollars a year or more of top-line revenue. Similar events facilities in and around Milton that I can find that are close are the White Columns and Atlanta National Clubhouses and the Yellow House Farm. All are fully enclosed, four walls. Is a one-time two hundred thousand dollar capital expense a lot to ask with an annual revenue target of over four million dollars a year? Now, I don't want them to spend money unnecessarily, but, but the only way to be sure to prevent sound from disturbing the community is to enclose it all. I have three kids. My two youngest are daughters ages five and eight, and I'd like you to put myself and put yourself in my shoes. Do you want to have to explain the lyrics to Bootylicious to your young girls? Do you want to have to listen to someone else's music in your backyard every Friday, every Saturday, when the weather's nice and you want to be outside, hour after hour, well past dark? As you know, there's an ordinance in Milton that limits the sound to sixty-five decibels. Is the spirit of this ordinance to allow a commercial entity to make millions of dollars each year while you and I give up our right-
One minute on the clock.
...to enjoy the property we own as it exists today? Please push them to a compromise that takes the uncertainty out and fully enclose the facility. For the following reasons. Number one, they have no proven plan to manage the sound. In fact, it continues to change even tonight. First, they said fully, fully enclosed, now twenty percent openings, and then something about sound curtains. Also, this decision sets a precedent of other event bars in our community, including, as I understand, the farm across the street from the Union. And then lastly, enforcement. If this goes through, who's going to enforce this? There's nobody once it's up, and we learned that the other night. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
We've got three public comments left.
How much time? We're out of time?
We've got thirteen seconds on the clock.
Okay, we've got three public comments. Is Council K. add another five minutes, and then it could be returned on the other side? Yeah, is all right with that. Okay. Again, we want to give everybody an opportunity to speak.
Our next public comment comes from Frank Morris. Our next public comment comes from Karen Talmack.
Is, how you pronounce the last name?
Talmack, T-A-L-M-C-A.
Is she available? Is she here?
Okay, then we have a Mr. Talmack John. I guess he's gone too.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, I have four in support to read into the record and three in opposition. First comment comes from Laura Renshaw, one zero six zero Birmingham Road, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. Preserve rural Milton supports alternative uses for local farms to be sustainable. In the face of rising maintenance costs, rising property taxes, and pressure for development, thus, we support the approval of the event facility use permit for Little River Farm, and we also support the hours they are requesting for use. Our next comment from Melissa Estes, one four seven one six Taylor Road, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. I own the property immediately adjacent to Little River Farms. I support the current use permit request because it is the only option currently being discussed that would not have a very negative impact on the quality of life for those residents residing or commuting on Taylor and/or Batesville roads. I was at home the night of the wedding held at the new LRF venue and could only hear music faintly when I was outside in my yard. Music played at the Valmont Pool Clubhouse located directly across from my driveway is much louder as is party noise coming from Taylor Glenn on occasion. Not an issue. The negative impact of the, of the possible alternatives would be so much worse. First, subdivision. Worse traffic, years of construction noise, and environmental distress, more crowded schools. And second, a pig farm, eyesore, constant smell of animal waste, heavy impact of environment, decreased property value for adjacent residential property owners. Our next comment comes from Charles Fisher, three eighty-eight Taylor Glenn Drive, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. Mr. Fisher says, "My name is Charlie Fisher, and I live in the Taylor Glenn Development on Taylor Road. I moved from Massapequa, New York, two years ago to be near my older daughters and grandchildren. I also have a daughter in Milton High School. One of the reasons we chose Milton was for its rural lifestyle and the great schools in our city. I was only here a few months, and I started to see trees being cut down and roads for new developments. This was not what I had expected. We who live on Taylor Road are now faced with the addition of at least two new developments on Taylor Road and the addition of another twenty-five acres for sale. The LRF has already had one event, a wedding. I drove down the road four times that night, and one time actually got out of my car. I did not hear any noises that were disturbing. In fact, I did not know that there was music. The choices that we face tonight are indeed not easy. Allow the music permit till eleven PM and have a great venue for weddings and other events. Add another development with an additional forty homes and at least eighty more cars, or live on a road with a pig and chicken farm. The owners of LRF have done anything except put a brick wall around their property to keep the noise out. I do not want to give people directions to my house and say, 'Turn on the corner of Batesville and Taylor. You cannot miss the smell.' That's what will happen if a pig-chicken farm goes up. Not only will the people directly across in Valmont not be able to open their windows, I am sure they don't want to look at pigs and chickens versus what they have now, or they can look into the backyards of homes that will be built and will probably then have to put up privacy shrubs. I am asking that granting this permit, you will be showing the other large landowners that you are willing to work for the best interest of Milton and keep it rural. Otherwise, we will become not known as a great place to live, but home to subdivisions, and at this rate, maybe allowing Starbucks and McDonald's on every corner." And next, from Ms. Lisa Crandall, one four seven zero zero Taylor Valley Way, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. She says, "My backyard shares the property line with the LRF. I believe my house may be the closest to the event facility being discussed at this meeting. I wholeheartedly approve the requested zoning variance and to allow the facility to have hours of operation that would keep them competitive with other similar organizations. I would like it to go on record that I did not hear the music from the last event at the facility and believe that if it was above the allowable decibel because of the close proximity of my property, I would have heard something. I feel the owners of LRF have gone above and beyond to try and accommodate all neighboring subdivisions and would love to see this event facility move forward." And in opposition, I have three public comments. First, from Michael Jacobs, two-two-four Elm Dale Court, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. "I believe this family, this facility sets a bad precedent for our community. Opening a commercial bar in rural Milton does not benefit or preserve anything." Our next comment comes from Mark Carroll, one-one-five-three-eight Valmont, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. "I do not support this permit passing." And our final comment read into the record from Mr. Tom Deering, one-one-four-four-eight Valmont Lane, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. "I would like to have this read into the public record as I am traveling on business and cannot attend the council meeting concerning Little River Farms' permit request for an event facility. I am concerned that and not in favor of this permit request for Little River Farms. However, I understand that the permit most likely will be passed, and ask that the restrictions recommended by the planning commission be included in the permit. These include: Friday and Saturday, amplified music stops at ten PM; events end at eleven PM; Sunday through Thursday, amplified music stops at nine PM and events end at ten PM; all amplified music is inside; alcohol ends when music ends; no entrance or exit off of Taylor Road. I also have concerns as to the type of events they plan on having. They are not forthcoming. The website that they are developing mentions adventure events, which include skeet and trap shooting. Mr. Ivy did admit that some weddings may include groomsmen shooting shotguns on the property. We would like the permit to not allow any type of gun event. We would prefer that they fully enclose the pavilion they have built, as this would greatly reduce noise disturbance coming from events being held on the farm. Thank you. Tom and Teresa Doring." That is the end of public comment.
Okay. All right, so, with the end of public comment, we're towards the public hearing. Obviously, the applicant come up and questions, the council has questions and explanations, as well as staff. We have comments for staff. I'll just start and, you know, and I'm going to talk a little bit, I see, see issues from both sides, I will say. And from my side of the table, we just continually, and, you know, part of it with our presentation from Mr. Daniels and whatnot, you know, every day we get emails about people moving here, just moved here because of the way Milton is, and then they don't want any more development. So I do see this as a very great, very good option. I've visited Mr. Ivy several times over the last several years when I was actually running for mayor. I stopped in there and looked around the property, and it's a beautiful piece of property. It's beautiful to drive by. I think it's the type of stuff that people move here, they drive through Milton, and they see properties like that, and that's what attracts them to it. That being said, I also understand, you know, concerns from the neighbors. I'm not a big fan of when somebody's starting a business or private, private business for us to put regulations on them or tell them how to do their business, whether it's hours or type of building or whatnot, unless we're willing to guarantee that they're going to be financially successful. I think that's the private market. But on the flip side, we also have to have concerns as it impacts other people. In hearing all the comments and emails, which we've gotten lots of, I'd say ninety-nine percent of people actually favor this application and use. It's just some concerns with, with noise. Some people are concerned with noise, and we've heard tonight. Now, I'm going to ask, and put our staff on the spot in a minute, but I don't think it, I don't think we can just arbitrarily say, "Well, it's too loud," or not. I think we'll have to, you know, use our, our ordinance. And so I want to get a little bit of, ask a couple of questions on that with our sound ordinance and what we can do on that. As far as, you know, asking the applicant to enclose the building or what, we're not, that, again, to me, we're telling them how to spend their money and, and run their business when we're not sitting here saying we're going to guarantee that it's, that it works. I think we have to look at it from the other side to where this is our ordinance, you've got to, you know, meet these requirements however you want to do it. And that may be, if it's a sound ordinance, it may be, you may have to change your speakers around, and maybe you have to direct things other ways or whatever, and that we can enforce, we can enforce that. So, that's a question I would have, and Chris, maybe you can help, help me get, get that answer, who needs to talk. We've got the, can you explain, or somebody with the sixty-five decibel sound limit, is that on the edge of the, would that be on the edge of the property? Would that be someone else's property on their property line? Or, somebody refresh my memory on that with our ordinance?
Yeah, we've got two different abilities to enforce, enforce noise in Milton. If you recall, we have what we call is a real noise component as well as a perceived noise component. So when you start to deal with the real noise component, that's where you take a decibel meter and you would measure the sound that would be transferred at the property line. That's the important place there for measurement, is what sound is at the, at the property line itself. And in this district, maximum permissible sound levels in residential received and emitted is sixty-five. Now, I point also to the section of our code, and I'll bring your attention to it, that there's a section that even if the sound measures, the sound, the sound threshold isn't being met, but it would be perceived to be a nuisance. We wrote that into the code as well, because sometimes you can't identify everything in either this black or white context. At some point, we have to take somebody who we have on our team that is charged with using their discretion to enforce the code every day of the week, and ask people in our police department, fire department, or police department of code enforcement, I'm sorry, to be able to go to a location where noise is occurring, and then they can evaluate it from a reasonable nuisance perspective. So, we've got different options. I don't want you to think that it's like the speed limit where if it's forty-five, it's forty-five, and as soon as you're at forty-six, you're violating the code, where you are violating the code at forty-six, but just because we have a noise ordinance that says sixty-five, at sixty-six, very obviously there's a violation. But I would argue certainly that the police using their discretion, there's probably some circumstances where fifty-five would be considered to be a nuisance sound based upon a set of criteria that existed that we couldn't even predict, that would just have to be evaluated at the time that somebody responded to it. So, I don't know if I answered your question or not, but that's kind of how the noise ordinance will be applied.
But that, that would be measured at the property line or the street, basically?
Yes, sir.
Is his property line the applicant's or the complainant's?
It would be measured at the, well, routinely, the person that complains shares one of those, one of those things.
But in this case, it could be a few properties over.
But at this point, I guess it could be a couple of properties over. It would be at the person that, the person that would be the victim in this thing, or who would be the complainer, would be the person that was obviously the one calling, so it would be measured at-
Their line.
-their line.
Which may or may not be-
Yeah.
Okay. Do you mind if I ask you a question?
Well, we'd get as close as we could to the line of the facility, but if we don't necessarily have appropriate, if, if we can get access to that location, you know, this was kind of interesting, because there's not this commonality of a border between it and everything else.
Along the, the two different measurements, you see, you have actually a, a physical measurement or an instrument measurement and then a nuisance. If, if it's at sixty-six, like you said, which is one decibel over, is our officer required to write the citation or try to mitigate it at that point?
Yeah, the, the goal would be to bring it into compliance. I mean, that's what we would, absent the time issue not, not being out of compliance of simply the, the volume, our first attempt would always- if it's simply the, the volume, our first attempt would always be to say it's in, you know, it's, it's over. Bring it back.
Needs to do something about it other than say, "It doesn't really bother me. I'm not going to do anything about it."
We've got an example of that on Highway Nine with the restaurant where they basically had to set their dial, their, their volume dial with a little piece of tape so that they would know that at this level, if they went beyond the tape, they were in violation of the ordinance. So I'm trying to pull up.
We've got another example here in the city of Milton. My daughter's graduation party at my house. At 11:15, the police walked up and told us we needed to turn the music down. So, so that is, and I'm not making a joke, but that is something that the officer, the first response probably would be if the, it's excessively, you know, over the limit or perceives it to be a nuisance, would go to the, go over to the facility and ask them to turn it down, is that correct? No, I was saying this, you know, if the, if, if there's a complaint or perceived nuisance, if it's a nuisance, whether it's over the limit or not, the first response would be, and the officer typically would go over to the facility and ask them to turn the music down or, you know.
Yeah, again, we give those people the discretion to use their discretion to the best that they feel the, the situation warrants. So in this particular circumstance that, yes, it makes great sense for us to be the peacekeeper of the deal and trying to bring the event in, in the community back into compliance with the code rather than going in on a ticket writing campaign. You know, but we reserve the right to issue those citations if in fact, you know, this becomes a, if it were to become a repetitive thing or a, a multiple infraction in one night, you know, that might rise to the level of, of taking additional enforcement action because simply trying to keep the peace didn't work.
Can you, and this would be more for the concern of, of folks that would worry that, you know, there would be repeated or there's nothing that the city could do about it. What would that, what would that process be if, and I'm not just picking on this one, but if, you know, had a facility and they continually were breaking the law, so to speak, with, with the sound? What would happen?
Yeah, and that's a, that's one of those questions that I've got to kind of give you a it depends answer. And it, it really does kind of depend. It depends on how soon those violations would occur, whether or not we went through some type of an analysis to determine that any, any rights have been vested in a use permit if you were to issue one. But we have all sorts of different, from the, from the, the straight warning to the use of the municipal court and code violation through all sorts of injunctions or other, other stronger enforcement type actions. I feel pretty confident that Ken would obviously guide us through that process, but there's probably multiple layers of things we could do.
That's right, Mr. Mayor. I mean, in addition to, this is on, in addition to just the standard citations and the warnings and those sorts of, of city court prosecutorial things which are legitimate and can be effective, to the extent those aren't effective, the city would have the right under the strength of its zoning code, particularly if it's granted a cop to vindicate its rights under that zoning code. You could bring an action by the city for injunctive relief in the civil courts to prevent, prevent future noise concerns by way of an order of, of the court punishable upon contempt.
Rick's a good question, probably Bill, I want to, I want to ask the applicant, I guess, Mr. Kay, maybe if you'd step up. I would just have a question. Is the applicant willing to, you know, in the interest of being a good neighbor and abiding by the rules, you know, do you guys understand that if you're over the noise orders or it's a nuisance and it's called and, and, you know, a process, but, you know, are you guys willing or you're, you're a client willing to, if there is a nuisance, you know, are they willing to work on it and turn the music down or?
I think, I think we should be slapped for it. I mean, I mean, our, our position is that we're going to respect the law and we believe we can, within the parameters of now putting this extension with the curtains, we do not believe that it's going to be an issue. And if we do break the code, we expect to be punished for it.
Because it, it sounds like, you know, we've got several comments that the initial event, no, it was a private event. It was noisy, but.
And that, and, look, all right, that was, that was, that was a mistake and, and it's like, it's like your party with your daughter. I mean, you know, it was a private event. It's, it's, you know, we, we are going to be regulated by the hours of operation. It's going to be a professional operation. It's not a private party for Mr. Ivy or, or his family. It's going to be used as an events facility. We're going to, we're going to treat this like any other professional events facility where when last call is made, last call is made. When the music is supposed to be over at 11, it's going to be turned off at 11. When people are out by 12, we're going to shuffle everybody out to get out. We're going to operate this like a professional facility. If we don't, we expect you to, to punish us for it. I mean, you know, we, we expect that. We are going to operate this according to the law. We're going to operate this according to what the permit says. And, you know, I mean, we'll work with you and we'll work with anybody any way we can. We, we, you know, there was, there's been a couple of things said about, you know, it was supposed to be fully enclosed. Well, we thought it was going to be fully enclosed and then the fire marshal said, "No, you've got to have 20% open." So we tried to deal with that by putting an opening in such a way that it's, it's where the trees are, full grown trees are, and we're going to put a barrier there, a curtain which is heat resistant, fireproof, which would block the sound from that 20% opening. And we're still trying to figure out now, because we are doing the extension, because it is an extension of the wall, do we need at all to put two 20% openings in that extension? The ones that are on the atrium as it is right now, it may not require that, so.
Rick, I think you have a question, Mr. Bill.
Yeah, I guess it comes down to, just to bridge off from what you were saying, Chris. Let's say there were, and again, I'm not predicting that there's going to be repeated violations, but I know that's the concern of the, the Valmont subdivision. In the case that we had repeated sound violations and whatever, do we as a council have the option to revoke? We're going to go, I guess, through the court system to pull that use permit if it goes that, that direction. Is there, is that even, because I've seen the other thing, the other notes saying, "Once we pass this, there's no more power. We can't do anything about it." I guess I'd like to have a comment on that and.
Let me start that one and then I'll turn that one probably over to the city attorney as well. And again, I hate to give you this kind of an answer, but I'm going to have to give it to you. It depends. And it depends basically, or it, it depends largely on where that point in time is from the time that you would issue a use permit. So let's just, let's hit fast forward for the purposes of an illustration, not suggesting that the council will get there tonight. But if you issue a use permit to allow for this use and substantial financial contribution or substantial financial exposure is taken because of the ability that you granted, there's some assurance that that business can operate, we're probably going to take you down a different road than a revocation if there's repeated violations. We're probably going to take you more down the road of the, of the civil court process in some type of injunction from the court that we could then enforce. If that's not the case and if this repeated violations would happen early on in the life cycle of this particular event facility and if we went through a vesting analysis, it could get comfortable with the fact that we would bring back in front of the council in some type of a public process, some type of a public hearing, a request to revoke. You certainly haven't given up the right to be able to do that because as you know, a use permit and the issuance of one is a, is you using your zoning, is using your discretion in a zoning matter. And that this council can do and any other future council can do or undo. So, you know, that, that's kind of what's at stake here tonight is we would want to make sure that, as you look to us to give you a good, a good, good course. If you say, "Gosh, Chris, this really isn't working. We need to figure out how to undo it." I'm going to have to kind of hit pause at that moment in time and work with the city attorney to real, to figure out what condition exists so that we give you a good recommendation.
So I, and I guess in all good faith, we would hope if, if this does pass, that the applicant in fact would be trying to work and be in a good neighborhood. But I guess I've seen some notes saying, I guess, the concern that this, this is going to be out there forever. That's not the case. There are options both through the court system as well as coming back before this council or whoever is on the council in the future.
If there is repeated non-compliance, there's different options, yes.
Okay.
Rick must have been reading my notes. He stole my question. However, I have another point. And we're talking, or up to this point, we've been talking about sound transmission and types of infractions and when they occur and when they don't occur based on decibel levels. I think we're past that point since the applicant has stated that he's going to install sound attenuation blankets in those openings. However, from what you've said here a couple of minutes ago, with the extension to the existing structure there, is that going to require by virtue of the state building code or state fire code that you put more openings in, in that?
Well, yeah.
That east wall, I guess is what you're talking about.
Yeah, the three side, the, we don't know yet. It's going to be really up to Matt Marietta and exactly what we've done is we have, the design that we submitted for the extension is a little bit narrower than the walls of the present atrium. Now, so that may be considered a new wall and therefore we may need 20%. Or we may consider the whole thing, one wall, and we won't have to put any additional cutouts. The wall in the rear, we will definitely have to have a 20%.
You talked about the north wall.
Correct. The one that's facing Taylor Road, east, east, yeah, that's, that's, that's facing Taylor Road. We're going to put it on the northern part of that atrium. So when the opening that's there, instead of, in the center, we're going to have a fireplace and it will be closed over here, which is, which is the path to Valmont. But over here, there are trees and woods for that 20%. So it will block that. So naturally, we'll block it without the curtains, but our intent is to put up those curtains there. If we're required to have two openings on each side, then we would put that dampening material there as well.
Just on the addition?
Yes.
That's not what he was, that's not what I heard. If there's an opening on the existing elevation and.
Yeah, but the openings that are there are not the, the 20% openings. It's an open, the, the atrium itself right now is, is open on the, throughout. I mean, our anticipation is with the, with the addition that the rear part of the atrium would be totally enclosed where the music would be. I mean, that's our desire to do that and that's the proposal right now that's with the building people.
What test data do you have on these sound attenuation blankets? I have.
If you permit me one second. These are two different companies. They're set in copies of each one. These are, they're two different companies that have curtains that do 20 and another doing 25 in terms of the STC, the, the sound dampening qualities of the decimals. So they'll do a 20 to, to 25. One is 20 and one is 25. So again, if we think about the tests we do with the neighbors and at the Taylor Road boundary line without the enclosure, all we had were vinyl sheets, just like you would see on the top of a, a roof that's being repaired. At the, at the boundary of Taylor Road, what we had was 45. If you went across the street to the Valmont property, all you had, well, it didn't even register 40 and then most decibel meters don't register under 40. So we had no regist, no registration at all on the other side of Taylor Road. So even if it was open and exposed, okay, with just those vinyl sheets, it was at 45 versus 65, which is the code. So what we're saying is by enclosing this, what we're going to do is offer a much larger buffer, a thicker buffer, plus the curtains will also guarantee that although we were only at 45 before, we'll be able to reduce that even more. So that's really what we're trying to do is reduce it even beyond what could possibly be required by the Milton Code section.
So are these blankets going to totally seal off those openings on the east side of the structure?
On the side that faces the Valmont subdivision.
Right.
So, yes, so, so to the extent that, the, the side that faces the Valmont subdivision would be 20% open and to the extent that there might be some reverberations from the sides, if we have to, if we have to have openings on the extension, then we would cover those with the curtains as well.
Totally, totally seal the openings?
Well, to the extent that we can still pull it back for safety reasons for fire, but yes, they would go. If, if the, if, yeah, if, if the door is eight feet wide, they'd be nine and a half, 10 feet, whatever it would be to do that.
So in order to achieve the, is it 65 at the roadway, about the sound decibel? Your music inside is going to be 90 right inside where the music?
At 90, it was only 45.
At 90, it was only 45 at the road level?
Yes.
So you're saying if you put those acoustical curtains there, then that 45 becomes 25?
No, it would probably, it would be less than, it would be less than 45, that's for sure. So what I'm thinking is it prob, again, when you went across the street at Taylor Road without those additions we're talking about, it didn't even register 40. So I'm saying with this additional, I can't guarantee you exactly what it's going to be, but it will certainly be below, significantly below the 45 that it was without them.
Did you understand that unless they totally enclosed in the blanket?
Sure.
You can't, it's only going to dampen part of it. Rick, do you have a question?
Do you have the specific width of what that 20% would be on that east wall facing Valmont?
You think it's eight feet, Kyle, right? Is it eight feet, is it eight feet high and then eight feet four inches wide? Is that?
Kyle's the gentleman, our contractor, so. Can I speak?
Yes, come on, step up and you go ahead and answer any questions.
He has not filled out, he has not filled out a form.
He could do, he can do that afterwards, Russ.
Oh, you did? I didn't know if I would be called up. I think that the fire marshal's.
Excuse me, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry. My name is Kyle Ingram. I'm the owner of Rimrock Property Restoration. I'm the general contractor. I actually live in Beaufort, 2015, Brixton Station, Beaufort, Georgia. I think that the, really what the fire marshal is looking for is not so much the height, probably a minimum height is in there somewhere. I think he's looking more for lineal footage so there's proper egress in the event of some kind of a fire. So, so the, the height is actually going to be lowered to help suppress the sound with transom windows. The opening on that wall, they're going to, it's going to be combined approximately about eight feet.
So eight feet, eight feet wide and possibly eight feet tall. So it's not going to be open all the way up with curtains to the top of the roof line? You're going to actually have either window or solid wall. Do you intend to insulate the walls of that structure where you're going to have the music located?
It currently was not going to be insulated because it's not conditioned, but it could certainly be insulated. Yeah, it would be minimal cost.
You know, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself, I'm one out of seven. So I, I support this use and the use of the property and, and the events of the facility versus what could be, you know, ultimately done on that property. So I think it's a good thing, that's why I support it. So, you know, I'm saying that this may pass or it may not, but in support of it, Mr. Kay, does your applicant realize and that if this passes and the council supports it, that we're also going to look to you? You guys have got to do what you've got to do to, to meet the law and not to be a burden on the neighbors. You know, we can sit here and tell you, "We'll put this or put insulation here and that," but if that doesn't work, that, we don't want to put that on us. We want to put the onus on you that if this is approved and you have a success, a successful venture there, but the onus is on you to make sure that it's done right and it's not impacting others.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. And like I, I hate to use kind of a royal we, the lawyers don't say I, we say we, but they've been a steward of this property, their family, for 70 years and they want to continue to, to live there. Joe and his wife are going to live there. We want to be good neighbors and we want to, you know, continue with, with living. We want to be good neighbors and we want to, you know, continue with living in a great environment and helping the city. I think that, just again, it fits within your plan. And like I said, if we're bad, we need to be punished for it. I mean, it's as simple as that. We accept that responsibility, and we know that you're giving us a tremendous amount of responsibility. We greatly appreciate that, and we do respect that.
Chair, Matt?
Yeah, I've got a question for the applicant, a couple of questions for staff, and comment, and I had a thought. You mentioned that you might be willing to self-govern the sound decibel at the last hour prior to close?
Yes.
Explain that again, real quick.
Well, I mean, to the extent that you, you wanted us to, we would agree to limit the sound rather than 60 at that hour, or that we would agree to 45.
Okay. And for the staff, just a couple of questions. One, they mentioned potential, and one of the comments on the opposing side was concerned about skeet shooting and firearms and things like that. I didn't hear that from the applicant, that was an intent, but no one's ever discussed that. What are the regulations that we have on that? Any thoughts, concerns?
I don't almost think that answer would come from us.
Are you asking staff?
Yeah, I'm asking staff.
On Constitution Day.
But that would probably fall under, basically, our ordinances with the firing of firearms.
That's right.
Some properties you're allowed to, some you're not. Sounds appropriate.
Just explain that as well, I mean, I just want to...
The state law is the one that governs the discharge of firearms.
Okay.
And, you know, to the extent that there was, the distance, the required distance from the property line was adhered to, and the projectile, whatever fired, didn't leave the property, there's the ability to use firearms on land in Milton today.
Sure.
So I don't know that it would necessarily, recreational type shooting like this would be something that Milton wouldn't have in its code ordinances per se, but it would be governed by the state law.
Governed by the state level, okay. I just wasn't sure about that. Do we have any...
It would be a good way, that would get the police called, at least.
It would be a good way to draw attention to the police, to be honest.
Well, and that's the next question I got to have, is the, there were concerns about the police having been called at the writing and nothing happened on that night. Do we have any history of that?
I don't know, I don't, and I wasn't there. I can surmise that the police responded and either evaluated and realized that there was not an actual occurring violation of the code, or to the extent they identified a violation, that they were able to bring it into compliance, that they felt as though they didn't need to take any more official action. I don't know, because I wasn't there, but that's likely the two circumstances that could have presented themselves.
All right. I'm 0 for 2 so far. The, yeah, exactly. I saw in the, in the request as well, you were asking for, and I wrote this down too, Friday through Sunday, music at 11, and close at 12. And then from, I think, Monday through Thursday, music at 10, and close at 11 during the school year, and then during the non-school year, music end at 11 and then close at 12.
That, yeah, that's correct.
One of the things that's important to us is that Sunday, in the Jewish faith, people don't get married on Fridays or Saturdays, they normally get married on Sundays. So I think by limiting the time period that we're open on Sunday, we would limit that sector of our potential business.
Is that it, Matt?
No, I'm still going here. And I'm, you know, my comment is as well, too, I tend to agree with you on the use of the land. I think it's important that we preserve the rural land. Somehow, we need to be able to find creative ways to do that. Obviously, we want to make sure that everything is working to the benefit of everybody, but we need to be creative in these solutions as well, with it reasonable to our current code as it currently stands. But I have, you know, obviously, we want to make sure everybody's a good neighbor, we mentioned that before, just an idea of a motion, not necessarily the one we want to go with, but just thinking about it. I'm not so sure I agree on the Sunday aspect, from a business perspective, I could, but I know we have a lot of people that are going to work the next morning, and kids, just thinking about it. But if we have an ordinance where a permit that goes, you know, music from Friday through Saturday, music decibel is 65 till 10, then music at 45 at 11, and close at 12. That way, you're self-governing on the decrease of the decibels. Then Sunday through Thursday, music is 65 to 9, music at 45 to 10, close at 11 during the school year. And then, let's see here, Sunday through Thursday, music is 65 at 9, music at 45 at 11, so it's two hours, and then close at 12 during the summer. Just as an idea, alcohol, of course, would shut down at the same time as music?
We would shut down 15 minutes before music.
Exactly. And I don't know, from a, from an ordinance perspective, we can require acoustical curtains? I don't know if we can do any certain ones, but we can just require them to do something? I don't know. Just asking the question. And can we have any, no speakers facing east as well? And those are just questions.
Yeah, I was going to say that, and I know you didn't direct it at me, but in terms of how the setup is, it would be impractical for us to do it the other way. And then also with the, with the limitations that are going to be placed on us, we would not be able to do that. You know, if we were blasting them that way, then we would, we would not be able to live up to your expectations with respect to the sound.
And the only thing I would go back to, we need to be careful that, because if we start putting parameters and specifications on what they do, then it doesn't work.
Sure.
Then it comes back on us over. In general, we need to say, you know, this is the end result, you guys need to figure out how to, how to make that happen as far as the noise.
Go ahead, Joe, you have it.
Yeah, I was going to add, well, first of all, I'd add to what you've already said, Joe, in terms of this is a, one of those things, it's difficult, because you certainly see both sides of the argument here. I'm very much in favor of Little River Farm existing the way it does today, and I want to support the IVs in terms of what they're trying to do, and applaud them for doing that, as opposed to just rushing out and selling the property and losing what Little River Farm means to the city of Milton. At the same time, I certainly have concerns about the property owners over in Valmont, and the property owners in Taylor Glen, although I think Taylor Glen is benefiting from the fact that there's a whole bunch of trees between Little River Farm and their property, not in all cases, but certainly in a lot. I walked the property a couple of weekends ago to just try to see if I could, you know, figure out what was going on here. The one thing that I do know, and the one thing that I think is covered by our ordinances, is that keeping the noise level down at the property line for Little River Farm, it's got to be the measure that we use.
Absolutely.
You don't want to run around all different places, getting even further away, to try to measure what sound is. And sound is a very strange thing. I'm no sound engineer, but I studied a lot of physics in college, and it's a lot like water. Sometimes you just don't understand how the heck water got to where it gets, but sound travels in very interesting ways. And I have no problem believing that people on their back porch, behind the front line of homes in the Valmont subdivision, you know, could hear exactly what was going on. So the burden is going to be on the Little River Farm to manage the sound. And whatever we come up with in terms of restrictions, in terms of decibel levels and times and stuff like that, I'm sure we're going to debate a little bit more, but I think that that's something that's, you know, going to have to be taken up by the Little River Farm. But I did want to address one question that got asked and didn't seem to get addressed real well, and that's the enforcement issue. We had one of our citizens say, once this permit is provided, you know, who's going to enforce it? Implying that there's going to be no way to enforce it. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands it, and I'd like Chris for you to weigh in on this, that we don't have a problem in the city today enforcing our ordinances.
That's, that's a correct statement.
Okay, so, any ordinance that we pass, or any permit that we provide, I have no doubt that the city's going to be able to enforce exactly the law that's set up to govern that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all.
And to just continue on that, we have examples of all levels of enforcement of that.
Oh, I know we do.
From things that are just, you know, quick and easy to fix, to things that span, you know, a longer period of time, and many orders of the court, so.
Yeah, and, you know, a lot of times, people don't understand all what goes on within the city, and I just wanted to make sure that our citizens understand that there's no problem enforcing our ordinances or the like, so, thank you.
There's not, the thing that does, though, and I'll highlight this, just because maybe you opened the door and I could walk through it quickly, is that it is easier for us to enforce the codes and ordinances that we have, or slight deviations from them. For example, it would be hard for our staff to go out with code enforcement and to say that the council conditioned them to not pointing speakers in a western direction.
Right.
That's hard to enforce.
Right.
Because, number one, it's hard to interpret, number two, it's hard to figure out exactly for all those little nuances. To somebody who hasn't sat through this meeting, that wouldn't know that that was a condition, that's hard to do. But to say 65 versus 60 versus 45, that's easy to do. And how do they get to that, is on them. That's easy to do.
Yeah, and Joe made the point, and I was going to make the point, had he not made it, that ours is just to say, follow the ordinances, somebody else's job is to figure out how they do that, so.
Well, into my point, you know, if we start saying, okay, do this and that, then all the applicant has to say, you know, if there is a problem, well, hey, the city told us to put the speakers this way and put this blanket up, and we did everything, so we don't have to do anything. So, again, it's, you guys will have to self-govern yourself, knowing that we're going to come, the city's going to come in and enforce, enforce the laws. But I think Rick, and then Burke.
Just, and I did go out, and you were, the IVs and you, Mr. K, were kind of, to kind of take us around and answer a number of questions who were out there. The new pavilion, or the new walls that you're going to put up, the intent right now is that's where you're going to have the music located?
Correct.
And I think what you'd said, without saying where you point the speaker, is the idea was to actually send it back, send the sound the opposite direction?
Absolutely.
Okay. And to, I guess, piggyback what Joe said, I know from the past when we had issues with another establishment, when we went back and forth, the city was not afraid to actually go and try to enforce because it was impacting neighbors. So, again, this passes, we hope that you really will work towards making sure that there aren't negative impacts to the people that...
Absolutely.
Burke?
I don't know if this is one of those that can be answered. You said that we could perhaps have civil penalties in the court, could order an injunction. What is an example that that injunction could be, other than follow the rules? Is it that they could say you can't have amplified music because you had 25? I know that's hard to say what the court could say, but...
Well, a lot of times, Councilmember Hewitt, it's not a matter of whether they would say anything different than what the city court might say. It's a matter of the, of the potential consequences if you do not. There may be a fine in city court, but there may be something much more severe if it is in fact a court of record that has placed a cease and desist order or an injunctive relief on someone. Again, that is, that is nothing that I think that the city of Milton would want to use as a first, a first line of enforcement. But on the other hand, the city manager is correct, this city has a history of being willing to take the long view with respect to having individuals come into compliance with the code, even if we have to drop a little bit of money to get there. So it's a function of, I would have to go put on proof at the court, I would have to show a nuisance that needed to be abated, or a violation of the codes, and then we would ask for relief by way of a court order. And that typically gets folks' attention, even if a $500 fine doesn't, is my, is my point. It's an element of magnitude.
And then one other thing for the applicant, is gunfire necessary for a successful facility?
Well, you know, again, he's, you know, Joe lives on the property, and I've fired guns over there before, and we would continue to do that. I mean, it's a, it's a facility that, we live there, we own the property, we would consider using firearms, yeah.
I would say that would just have to be under state law, but...
Yeah, state, yeah.
It would have to stick with state law.
And I mean, we're under the same restrictions in terms, we have a dove hunt, whatever we have, we're not going to be firing over Valmont or other homes, that sort of thing.
Chris, you have it?
Yeah, Councilmember, if I could give you just a little bit of, I guess, input on that as well, is in light of this House Bill 60 that we've had to make so many modifications for, it's reasonably strong language in that code that would suggest that we shouldn't try to enforce any type of firearm regulation outside of what those laws that exist at the state level at this point. So even if you might want to do that, and probably going to try to guide you away from that, just because of the, of this new law that has caused all these changes to occur, it's even easier to, it's easier to shoot guns everywhere in Georgia at this point.
Well, and I guess it, it doesn't necessarily have to be pellets going out of the shotgun, you could actually do blanks if you're doing it just for the sake of sound. Not that we would regulate that, but that would be...
Well, also too, remember, we're very mindful of potential liability, and a lot of just, just the normal business type of concerns will govern our behavior. The same with holding the keys after, we determine that somebody may or may not have had too much to drink. There's dram shop laws, all of those kinds of things where tremendous amount of liability is involved. If they're shooting, tremendous amount of liability involved. So we're very mindful of the parameters that the law places on us, and also insurance concerns and that sort of thing. So we think in that respect, it will be self-regulating.
Bill?
Yeah, Matt? I'll say one general statement here, I'm pleased with the fact that you're looking at a use like this. It fits in with our mission statement of the city, that we shall preserve the rural character of the city. Having said that, we've been talking about nuisances, and there are different forms of nuisances. And one of them, neighbors talked before about the lood and crude music that's been If we resolve the sound transmission issue, whether you play that type of music or not, it should be contained. And I'm not a prude. Having been in the Navy and spent most of my life in the construction industry, there's nothing I haven't heard on there. But I agree with the neighbors, I don't think their young children should be exposed to it.
Absolutely.
So, I would, I would just ask that you pay attention to what's being transmitted out there in respect of the neighborhood. I'm sure you all have children, too, or are going to have children, and I just suggest that you keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
Matt, Joe?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Do you have any, anybody else have anything they want to ask?
Well, let's see what the motion is.
The motion is, I think it's shut down. I don't know, I just want to know. We're going back and forth.
Go ahead, Matt.
I'll make the motion to approve the consideration of U 14-02 for 14505 Bassfield Road by LRF Milton LLC to operate a rural event facility with staff recommendations. With the change that hours of operation and music decibel level shall be the following, that on Sunday through Thursday, music decibels will be at 65 until 9:00 p.m., then music decibels will be at 45 until 10:00, and it will close at 11:00 during the school year. And then during the non-school year, from Sunday through Thursday, music is 65 until 9:00 p.m., then music at 45 decibels until 11:00 p.m., close at 12:00. And then on Friday and Saturday, music at 65 until 10:00, then music at 45 decibels until 11:00, and close at 12:00, with of course alcohol ending 15 minutes prior to the music turned off.
I was with you through the...
Sure.
Sunday through Thursday, not during school. Did you have some Friday through Saturday that was just...
Friday and Saturday was music at 65 decibels until 10:00, and 45 decibels until 11:00, and shut down at 12:00.
Okay. What we need to do now is if we have a second, and then we can discuss it.
We can amend if we have a discussion. Make a second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second for approval with the stipulations that were read into the record on the time and the sound levels. I have a question for staff, and can legally... I have a question for staff, and can legally, if our sound ordinance is sixty-five, can we, you know, can we turn around and change it to, you know, to one, one, one facility and drop it down to forty-five? Is that, you know, is that legal unfair?
Well, I think to the extent you're asking whether or not you can condition a special use permit to a sound level that is different than your code, I think that is part of your authority as part of your mitigation of the impact of the development on adjacent property owners. Whether that's the way you wanna do it is of course a policy decision. But if you're asking the general question of do we have the right, yes, I think we have the right to make our regulations a little more strict in this context, yes.
Anybody else have something?
Can you repeat the non-school year weekday?
Yeah, what I've captured here, and I would, since you've asked that, if we, at some point, we'll wanna clarify whose school year we're adhering to. So we wanna identify what school year that is. But what I captured here was Sunday through Thursday at sixty-five decibels until nine, forty-five until eleven, with a close at twelve.
Correct. Sunday through Thursday.
Sunday through Thursday, not during the school year. So essentially, Sunday through Thursday during the summer, said a different way.
I think you have to limit to Fulton County school year, probably.
We would, and, and if this motion goes somewhere, we'll have to amend, you know, well, I'm putting words in your mouth, but I'm thinking you meant the Fulton County school year.
Okay, Rick, question?
The question as far as going back to the original recommendations, did it include the stipulation of the, the three-sided additional structure with the openings of twenty percent and the curtains, is that somewhere in? That, that was, that was my question.
If you go to page two of the report, we have the planning commission's recommendation. And they stated in C, a condition of amplified sound of music shall be located within the enclosed portion of the atrium. They didn't speak to, you know, which direction, just within.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not, again, I don't wanna get into regulation of where they need to place. I think they, they would figure out how to do that so they meet the sound requirements. The question is, is that three-sided structure that will only have a maximum of twenty percent opening, is that part of the agreement? Is that part of the application now?
I had to ask a question because the motion that was made specified staff's conditions to be included in.
And I just come question.
This is the planning, the planning commission made that recommendation. So at this point, the motion that exists does not incorporate the planning commission's recommendations.
Correct.
So, in answer to your question, I don't believe what you've asked, if it's incorporated, I do not believe that that, that we capture that in the staff conditions.
Okay. A concern I have, it's easy for us to sit here now and say, well, you know, at nine P M, drop this and this in different levels. But in a practical, you know, a couple of different things. One, you know, with the, from the applicant's perspective, does that impact their business? Are we negatively impacting their business unreasonably? But number two is just enforcement, and, you know, it's fine for, I was talking here, but, you know, with thirty-plus some officers out there, and if there is an issue and they get called, how do we, you know? You know, do they pull out a book and say, oh, well, let's see, let's see, on this property and address, we, it's forty-five, bring this hour to that hour?
While I'm in agreement with that, Joe, did we ever get a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a motion, so.
I just wanna make sure. I was writing down decibels in time.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, so we're just discussing it now.
I, I agree with you, Joe. I, I think all of a sudden we're creating a quieter song inside of Milton. And that, something's not, something doesn't make sense there. Uh, e- either our sound ordinance is good or it's not good. If it's not good, we need to change it. If it is good, it needs to be able to stand up and work. Now, I think the challenge is gonna be doing what needs to be done from an engineering point of view to keep the decibel levels where they need to be against the property line. I, I think that's plenty of, enough of a challenge not to introduce, depending on what time of day it is, the changes.
I, I would agree, and, and the applicant has said in their studies and the tests they did, they were good at forty or forty-five at the property line. So their onus would be on them to, you know, make sure that that happens.
I think the only, the only difference is, is I believe the applicant has, has imposed, instead they would take the forty, the forty-five at the, the additional hour. And along those points, I have a little heartburn at the twelve A M closing during the, during the week. I just think that's a little bit too late.
I think the applicant can impose anything that they want to upon themselves, as long as they stick within the law.
That would be, I mean, my suggestion, because if we start, and it's against the point, we can do that. But where do we get to a point where, you know, our police have to have a special handbook when they drive around? Okay, this address, it's nine o'clock, or this one's eleven. You know, I think what I wanna portray is that, number one, I like the use, I think this is something that, you know, people drive through Milton, it sort of attracts them. I know, you know, I like to drive by there, and I, I believe people in Valmont like to look at that too. Now, there's a little give and take, so, you know, my point is, I wanna put on the applicant that you gotta be a good neighbor, and we're gonna just hold you to our law, and you gotta figure out how to be a good neighbor. And obviously, you wanna be a good neighbor because, you know, your residents around here may send business there. You don't wanna be, you know, have everybody in the, in the city not like you. So, you know, I think we gotta come up with something that, you know, works, but is reasonable for the folks that live around there.
Well, as, as the one that made the motion, I gotta ask the question, I mean, one, if we are helping the applicant from his self-imposed recommendation by having the ordinance according to what he was asking for himself, that's great, and two, I don't see why it's a problem. One, we just told our residents that we had no problem enforcing our code. So, we, you know, if, I don't think it'd be a problem enforcing what we have to have here, we just need to make sure that we do the right thing with regards to it. And I, I can agree with Bert Harper on the twelve o'clock during the summer too, I'm amenable to amending that as well.
I'm not sure what's the, what's the direction on the, the decibels of the forty-five, sixty-five? Where's counsel on that?
I'm in support of the, the tiered system in earlier close during the week.
And I, and I guess I would say the same thing, because again, that, the applicant is the one who said that they would, they would agree to a tougher standard than what our current law is for this event facility in consideration of the neighbors.
Well, I would, from my side, I'd like to ask the applicant if that, again, before something gets approved or whatever, and, and, you know, wanna make sure the applicant either, obviously aware of it, but, you know, is com- not, I mean, we can make any decision we want, but wanna make sure that we're clear that the applicant's saying yes or no, we, we're amenable to that. So we at least know.
Like I said, I mean, we'd love to have sixty, sixty-five, but, but we think that as a compromise, you know, we would do the forty-five. I would just like you to reconsider the Sunday, and maybe the Sunday during the summer versus maybe Sunday during the academic year, that we might be able to have weddings later to accommodate the Jewish faith.
Can I make a suggestion, and I see everybody's point, but, and I'll just say, it may be harder, not, not harder to enforce, but it will take some extra steps if, if we do the tier. But it's maybe there are compromises, or maybe you go from sixty-five to fifty-five, that gives you, you know, tones it down a little. And again, I hate to tell somebody how, what hours to operate their business and this and that, and if, you know, it's correct that on Sundays, you know, that, for a Jewish wedding, that, you know, they'd be on Sundays, but also understand school night. So, you know, maybe have the hours just like Friday, Saturday, and Sunday during the summer. And then during the winter, during school, you know, ratchet it back down to eleven o'clock. I don't know.
That would be fine with us.
I don't know if that's a compromise with.
I think that's, that's, that compromise would be agreeable to us.
So, I'm not saying we have to do that, but I'm saying that is, the applicant is, is agreeing to that. So if, if counsel wants to, or if you wanna stick with your motion, or.
A comment on the first part, I mean, if we change, if we change it from sixty-five to whatever, it's still a difference. And if the applicant's agreeable to forty-five, let's stick with forty-five. To me, there's no difference in forty-five and fifty-five is a, is an enforcement. And Robbie, can you tell me perhaps, what was the original in the intent, the hours that was, was asked?
The original intent is, I think we, we looked at the other use permit that was, you all.
Did they ask, but did they, in their application?
No, they had asked for longer hours than what was the other use permit.
I think that's worth a question.
But what were those hours that they asked for? Do you have those handy?
And then maybe the applicant, they have to.
I have them handy.
They were an hour.
Yeah, originally, originally, what we had asked for was nine A M to midnight with music until eleven P M. Following eleven P M music termination, everyone would vacate by twelve A M. Days of operation would be seven days a week, so.
So you asked for the same, nine, nine to midnight, seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay.
But Monday through Thursday, Monday through Thursday, ten P M cutoff on the music during, again, the academic year, with the facility shut down by eleven during the academic year.
So we're, you said Sundays not during the academic year?
No, we were asking for Sundays.
Sundays, period.
We were saying Monday through Thursday, yes.
So. I think I, well, we need a matrix.
Would you mind coming? Asking the person that seconded it to withdraw, and asking the maker of the motion to withdraw, just so we can have some more discussion.
I'll make the motion withdraw, strictly.
Rick?
Rather than having a motion on the, on the table. We've got a couple of things we have to clear up anyway.
Gotcha.
All right, Matt, we can withdraw the motion. And, all right, first, do you wanna ask?
Yeah, a couple of things I wanna draw your attention to, just to make sure that by the time we get the next motion that, that I've at least pointed about, is that there are some recommendations that came out of the planning commission as well. I just wanna point you to those, they're on page two of your packet. The planning commission seeks to modify section one C by adding a three, four, and five. We're largely right now stuck in figuring out what the right answer is to one C, one and two. But I just want to draw your attention to the fact that there are some recommendations that came out of the planning commission to deal with portable toilet facilities as well as deliveries, et cetera, that, I just don't want you to overlook them by just accepting staff's recommendation. That's number one. Number two, if the noise ordinance as it exists today speaks to sixty-five and sixty based upon times of the day, it is a whole lot easier from our perspective that rather than you specifying that it be at sixty-five at a certain time, simply let us know at what point in the night you want it to drop to forty-five, and what days of the week. I don't know that we need to be worried about the sixty-five since it's already a part of the code. We just need to start to know when you deviate from the code. So if you could identify for us a couple, it sounds like I'm starting to capture what you're gonna make as a motion. If you could identify the day of the week, and what, and when you want it to drop to forty-five, that's a great first step.
Correct.
As well as then when you want the facility to close.
Yep.
That would be a great second step. If that deviates between different times of the year based upon the academic school year, I will tell you that we can do that. Although every additional detail we add to it, you potentially make it so cumbersome, it's difficult to enforce because we're not quite sure what we're enforcing, we'll do our best. So I just wanna point that out, and then just highlight the planning commission's recommendations, so that we're not.
Sure.
If you like them, great. I don't, I'm not suggesting you have to make them a part of whatever motion's presented, but I just wanted to point them out.
So, I think I got it, you guys, you got it?
All right.
So make a motion to approve consideration of U one four dash zero two one four five oh five Batesville Road by LRF Milton LLC to operate a rural events facility, section sixty-four dash one eight four two, with planning commission recommendations, items number three, four, and five. C three, four, and five, excuse me.
Would you wanna read those?
Uh, which would be, the amplified sound of music shall be located within the enclosed portion of the atrium. Uh, number four, all delivery shall enter off Batesville Road. And number five, when portable toilets are used, they shall not be viewed from Batesville Road and Taylor Road. And then staff recommendations with the change that during the academic school year, from Friday through Saturday, music starting at ten, I'm sorry, music at, um, music at ten would be at forty-five decibel, close at twelve.
Is that? I don't think that's the intent you were.
I'm sorry.
During the school year.
During the academic school year, I'm sorry, hold on a second, or during the Friday through Saturday, music at forty-five decibels until eleven, close at twelve.
Do you need to add, starting at ten, the?
Starting at ten, starting, okay, uh, music at ten, from ten to eleven.
Decreasing to?
Decreases to forty-five decibels.
Ceases at eleven.
Ceases at twelve.
No, ceases at eleven.
No, during, during the school year.
Ceases at eleven, and event facility closes.
Event facility closes at twelve, that's, okay. Music ceasing, okay, from ten, music from ten to eleven is a forty-five decibels, closes, stops at eleven, close at twelve. And then during the summer, from Friday.
Let me break, I, I think what, if I'm wrong, what you're looking for is a time that probably the same on the weekends as it is during the summer, but then during the school year, during the week.
Yeah.
You're gonna ratchet them down.
And I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, I just can't make a motion, it's gonna give you Sunday, I'm sorry. That's where I'm stopping right here, I'm just gonna go from Friday through Sunday. On Friday through Saturday, close during the summer would be also from ten to eleven, decibel forty-five, close at twelve. And then during the school year, from Sunday through Thursday, from nine to ten, at forty-five decibel, close at eleven. And then during the summer, also from Sunday through Thursday, from nine to eleven, forty-five decibel, close at twelve.
Is that?
I'm sorry, I don't follow it.
I'm not following that yet.
Okay.
Why don't we see if you can get a second for us, so we can discuss this?
Yeah, do you want?
Or withdraw?
Do we need to just, all right, I wanna discuss a time. Do we have a second?
Oh, second, so we can withdraw.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Only one voted for it, so that fails.
Can I, can I, maybe what I'm hearing in the.
I think you, maybe you can help us catch this, Chris. So, I'm, I'm hearing that there's some, potentially some, still some debate on the council as to whether we should put these two timeframes in buckets. And here it goes, Chris, one of his bucket lists. But I'm seeing that there's the probability that the council wants to approve something with a Monday through Thursday, or a Monday, or a Sunday through Thursday, either or, and then either a Friday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I think that's a, that's one we would probably want to figure out where the council's leaning at this point as to whether or not Sunday gets lumped in with Friday and Saturday or not, that's one.
I have an issue with that. But let me ask this, what, how about if we start out with what the applicant is asking for? Let me get, make sure we're all clear on that, and then if you wanna make a change to that. The applicant is asking now for.
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to be treated equally.
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to be treated equally at, music stops at eleven, facility closes at twelve, am I correct? On Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Correct.
And that's throughout the year. Then during the week, the applicant's asking for, yeah, Monday through Thursday, what, they're asking, stop music at ten and close at eleven during the week. Not Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then during the school year, what was the cha, what would the change be there?
During the school year is actually, um.
An hour earlier.
Closes at eleven.
But I think we're at eleven.
And during the summer, it closes at twelve.
And then during the summer, every night would close at twelve, is what the applicant was asking. They were, the music would stop at eleven.
Right.
So basically, the summer is the same as weekends, but then during the school year, ratchet it back an hour early. So, the only, you know, and I can see, you know, Brett. And I can see, you know, ratcheting the, the decimal level down if the applicant's willing to do that, or other means that they said they're willing to do that. I still, I, I, you know, legally, I don't know Ken, um. The Sunday thing, if, if there is, you know, in fact Jewish weddings and things like that, are we being um discriminatory if, you know. We're shutting it down a day early. It may not be, but I'm just, maybe a tough question to ask.
Well, you know, that's, the applicant has raised that. I, I, I think that from, you, you are making a, I think, a. Non-discriminatory generic land use regulation is what you're making this evening. And I, I, I wouldn't even want to venture down the path of whether we're trying to be prohibitive to a certain. Uh religious uh use of the property or not, but I, I, I continue to believe you have the right to do this. Candidly, I'm just not sure right now I'm getting your vision. The city manager are trying to get your vision. It's what you want this to look like. Um but please just try to make your policy the way you need to. Don't, don't be concerned right now about, about that issue.
I mean, I'm just concerned that, you know, people have to go to work on Monday morning.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, I'm just.
Religious thing.
Okay, I might have it captured a different way. Um it might be working towards what I think I'm getting, gathering from you, so let me see what, see where we go here. It is a lot easier of a standard for us if we tie these differences of time to something that's not as ambiguous or, you know, the changes year to year as the Fulton County School Calendar. It would be much easier for us if we were to change these to be the months of, for example, so June, July, and August would be treated potentially differently than January through May. And September through December. That gives us a very crystal clear um start and stop period.
Sure.
Largely will track with the, with the Fulton High School calendar. What I've captured um is that, and you all will still have to decide, I'm going to start with where the mayor was by saying what the applicant was asking for and then see where the council lands. Um but that for January through December, so the full calendar year, then on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, music would end at eleven and the facility would close at midnight. In addition, Monday through Thursday would be between June and August, summertime, June and August. That the, the music would end at eleven and the facility closed at midnight. And that January through May and September through December, in each calendar year, Monday through Thursday, music would stop at ten and the facility would close at eleven. Think is, I don't know if that's right, but that's.
Right, that's what their answers.
Place to start from. That would be modification, if anybody were to make a motion, that would modify section one C, one and two. And then uh we've heard potentially that there's some interest in including the planning commission's recommendations, one C, three, four, and five.
Chris, could you read that, what you just wrote, said again, your, your thoughts?
Um all of it?
Which one do you want to read?
Just, I just want to write it down, see it in front of me. You started talking.
Do the article again?
Yeah.
Sure, um something along the lines, if, if somebody's working towards getting to a motion, would be to approve this. With staff's recommended conditions as well as the planning commission's recommended conditions.
Right.
But for the modification to one C, one and two, um to include the language that would suggest that the facility could operate. For the entirety of the calendar year, Friday through Sunday, where music would end at eleven and the facility would close at midnight. Additionally, that in the months of June, July, and August, that the facility would operate Monday through Thursday. The facility could operate with music until eleven, with the closing at midnight. And uh in the months of January through May and September through December, on Monday and Thursday. Monday through Thursday, that the music would end at ten and the facility close at eleven.
No lowering of decibels?
Well, no, that's, you could have lowered decibel, but that's just.
The hours.
Those are the hours, those are the hours, proposed hours of operation.
And you could make it clean if you wanted to by adding something that says, one hour before the music is to cease, it will drop to forty-five decibels or something.
Right, okay. Okay.
Didn't mention alcohol surfs.
No, I haven't, I haven't, no, that did not touch alcohol surfs.
But would that be pretty standard, an hour before?
Yeah, there'd be certain times that go along with the final call and stopping.
Let's make it standard. That's fifteen minutes before the music stops, right?
Anybody else have anything else they, or, you know?
I still, the weekly times don't like the close. And I would prefer it to be, I think like Matt was saying, Friday and Saturday versus Sunday through Thursday.
I think it, I'm leaning more that way because I think more standard, if you just look at business operating, regardless of what venue, Sunday's usually closed down a little bit earlier. Because people are getting prepared for Monday for work, what?
My suggested times for whatever it's worth would be Sunday through Thursday. June, July, and August. Knowing that school though does start in the middle of August. I don't know if we could, you know, mid, do mid, I don't want to con, con, confuse it anymore, but would be uh summer months, let's just call it that. Ten to eleven, closing, school year, nine and a ten, closing.
Summer ends on the twenty-first of September.
Let's go back to calendar, June, July, August.
Yeah. Months, complete months.
It's yesterday.
But I think you're going back two hours, you're cutting it back two hours from what you requested, is that what I mean?
No, just one, music at ten, um during the summer, music at ten, if place closes at eleven, school year, music at nine, place closes at ten.
Chris, you, you had what was proposed, right?
I was just giving as a start.
No, no, I'm saying, but is what Bert's saying, two hours difference or one hour difference?
No, I would capture that if he were, if he were to suggest, what I think I just heard, Monday through Thursday during the call, during the school year one, music at nine, close at ten, that would be a one hour reduction.
Did you say ten and eleven?
I said ten and eleven.
I see Richard Samberg.
So you're saying Sunday through, Sunday through Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah, Sunday through Thursday.
June, July, and August, Sunday through Thursday, from ten, close at ten, shut down completely at eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Music at ten.
And then. The other nine months, the music's, which would be the school year, would be nine o'clock music, ten o'clock closing.
Yep.
And.
And then Friday and Saturday, close, you know, music stop at eleven, close at midnight.
Mm-hmm.
The one thing I didn't capture was what, what did you say, Sunday through Thursday, June, July, and August?
Sunday through Thursday, June, July, August.
Sum, summertime.
Yeah, okay, I've got to look, follow my, my hieroglyphics here. Eleven and twen, eleven, oh.
Ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven.
So for Monday through Thursday?
Sunday through Thursday.
Oh, Sunday through Thursday.
You got your circles. And then we just need to have the decibel thing an hour before.
We see this.
It goes down to forty-five.
I think I can do it a third time. I think I got it.
Sorry, you've been taken on as a proposed duty.
He already had two, two tries.
Which one do you want?
Karen, you always made our motion. You got, you made them concise.
I'm the, I'm the complicated motion person. I'm having to sit here and be very quiet, so, you know.
Maybe you can, maybe you can write it up.
Hopefully I have the character for me.
Write it up here and one of us can then.
I'm staying out of it.
Chris, you got that? Chris, are you, are you doing what you're hearing the council, or are you doing what was proposed?
If you had your thing flipped, Doug, you'd, you'd see what he was doing.
Cause I almost want to have the two to compare so we know.
We'll flip this up, Matt, so you can see what he's doing.
I think I got it.
We weren't kidding.
I got it.
I was going to have to borrow your jacket, I was freezing it. I had to go to the car and get a sweater. I keep this place so cold. I just went and got my, I, I keep my sweater in the car just for council meetings, even in June, July, and August.
That's my condition is right there.
You're just going to school year.
No, they're still school, yeah. No, I keep it there. Well, plus the year, I keep my sweater in the car.
Chris, I got it.
So does Chris.
Chris, just add the. Deci, add the decibels, one hour.
Let's get this first and then.
But Chris, what you're saying here is what you're, I believe you're hearing the council say, from some members of the council.
That's, that's.
What he heard me say.
That's correct. That was what I just heard probably Bert say.
Okay.
And now, maybe, now, maybe that, now that this is written down, we can slide the scale up and down depending on where the majority of the council wants to go.
I like that.
The only things, I mean, um we need to add, obviously the condition, the music decibel would be at forty-five.
Yeah.
For the hour prior to the music ceasing.
Correct.
Can we debate that some?
Sure. Go ahead.
I'm just concerned that our city ordinances aren't appropriate. What you're saying by the fact that we're having to reduce the music level. Is that our city ordinances don't work. And I've got some concerns with that. Not, and in addition to the fact that somebody's going to have to figure out what time they have to change, what reading. It, is it too noisy when we're following our own ordinance is the question? Cause if it's too noisy, yeah, let's change it. If it's not too noisy, then why are we trying to make it less noisy?
I think it depends on the time of day.
Well, no, hold it. Our ordinance covers, covers everything.
I, Joe, I.
But I will say, I mean, if the applicant was asking for it, then why not?
I think the point is, the applicant may have said they'd do it, but are we adding more burden if, to Joe's point, if our ordinance isn't right, then we need to change our whole ordinance.
Mr. Merck, could I, could I respond to that maybe just quickly, because it's a, it's a, it's a great question and a, and a, and a good point. When we defined those decibel levels, there was more that went into figuring out what that decibel related to than simply music. Cause we had to be very careful because of the proximity of houses in Milton to other houses, particularly in neighborhoods that are closely, you know, next to each other. That we could make every air conditioner unit in Milton illegal overnight by dropping the decibel level down to what noise that would transmit at the property line. So it was, it was designed to be for more than just simply music. It was also designed, and that's why there was that second part in there that, that went into the more perceived enforcement than the real enforcement. You know, to the extent that this applicant has suggested that they would be willing to condition themselves to a stronger standard than what Milton. Actually has in his code, I don't know that there's anything necessarily wrong with that. Or would try to talk you out of um accepting that, but I would say that, you know, the, the numbers of sixty and sixty-five were determined because we're, we've figured out those numbers for more than just music. Leaf blowers and air conditioners and you'd be amazed at what actually makes sixty-five decibels worth of noise.
Well, and we had some practical experience with it based on.
Right.
A situation not too far from here, and I thought that it stood up very well in terms of being appropriate.
It's, it's a good fair code.
And, and living through that and be, sitting in people's homes and hearing what that decibel amount at night still sounded like, and I was in someone's home. It's still, depending on proximity, even though that's the standard, it's still, to me, was obtrusive if I were to live in.
And that's why, that's why decibel levels can cover the whole thing, that it's got to be this perceived notion as well, and that's what our ordinance covers.
My, I mean, I guess my thought is if the ordinance was right, and maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but we can't fix the ordinance tonight. My question is, is if it was right, then why do parents have to explain a gruesome song to their five-year-olds going to bed at night? You know, and that's a valid concern by the Belmont residents.
No, I'm not. The, the decibels may have been too, it sounded like they were a whole lot more though.
Well.
Yeah, we don't know, we don't know.
We, we don't know about that. We can't debate what we don't understand.
The reason I support that the, the decibels going down is, is two-fold. One, because the applicant has said that they would be willing to do that. And two, I think that it gives the concerned residents across the way that have sound issues, but, you know, a thirty-three percent reduction in what it could be. So that's why I am in support of the forty-five decibels one hour before. I don't know if it's something, I think there are perhaps bigger issues that. You know, that we should be spending our time discussing than that at this point.
You know what, but, and keep in mind, and I want to ask, I want to give the applicant an opportunity, again, what's proposed right here. You know, and again, I'm not saying we can do what we want, but I want them to at least uh address that is that, you know, and because. We're not only, if they said they would give the forty-five, but then we're ratcheting down the hours too. They may not want to do that, so I would just like that.
Guys, we offered, yeah, we offered up.
You, you would agree with this or not, just so we know.
We offered up the forty-five because of the time to appease it, but I will tell you that this will not be a viable option for us, period. If we have to close, um if we have to turn the music off at nine and close by ten, it will not be a viable option for us. And I mean, again, we're, we're happy to ratchet it down to forty-five for that last hour. But if you close us down that early, that will, that will throw Sunday out, period. That will be a day we will not be able to book anything.
Let, let me ask you.
And, and so during the week, the same, so if that's the option, then, you know, again, we were happy to, to ratchet it down and volunteered that and offered that as a compromise. But if you take two hours off the table for us, Sunday through Thursday, then that just makes it, 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 those days will just not be possible to rent.
Let me ask a question, if, if the hours were more in keeping with what you have proposed, but then you ratcheted the music down, would that be more?
Absolutely, and I think that if we changed it from ten to eleven, then we would be happy with that, and we would ratchet it down to forty-five. But we can't live with, with nine and ten and make this a viable option. Nobody will rent this facility. Nobody will. Because you, you have to figure that people.
Concern is the, the noise and the.
And we're happy to ratchet it down to forty-five, and again, I understand your concern about if the law's not, you know, i- i- if the sixty-five decibels is not correct, then why do we have it? We're happy to exceed that, and even though, even though the code would permit us, even though the code.
You don't mean exceed from a decibel point of view.
No, 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 but, but I mean, we'll do better than that.
Yeah.
And we're, even though we know, even though we realize that the code would permit us in normal circumstance to go to sixty-five. We will take it upon ourselves to have a more stringent um noise reduction for that accommodation. And we realize that for us, we think that's the only way that we're going to make this a viable option because. If you're going to rent a place at six o'clock, by the time you get up here, it's not going to be to seven-thirty anyway, and then the thing's over an hour and a half. It just, it just isn't going to work during the week. It just is not going to work for us.
Yeah, let's see what Chris comes up with here and he's.
A difference to look at, I'm not saying this is wrong, but this one would, uh, this is what was just described.
What you want, Ari?
In that circumstance, there's really no difference. You don't have to specify school year versus not school year.
Yeah.
So that's the difference there, is, is that it takes away the nuance of what those three summer months mean. So that's, that's what you just heard. And I can just flip back to the other one. Just copy and paste, so I didn't make it go away.
So the music goes down Sunday through Thursday at nine P.M.? It goes down to the lower level?
No, ten P.M. It's one hour before.
Ten P.M. at minus to nine, nine P.M.
Well, but you, well. If we're starting with, if we're starting with what the applicant was asked for or what.
That's what they're asking for.
Yeah, I think that's what they're asking for, though what we're throwing in there is the low end of forty-five, to forty-five an hour before.
Which is what they agreed to.
Right. So, correct, is, from the applicant's side, is this proposed, this is what you would like to see?
Correct.
So, you know.
Can we ask the question?
Um, you know what, hold on one second. It's not in protocol, but Ken, what do we, do we fill out a comment card, or what's, what's your thoughts?
Well, a- at this point, we're in, we're in council discussion. This is, this is, this is really not an appropriate time, except to address questions that you raise to whoever in the audience you have a question for. Which you've been asking some from the applicant, and that's perfectly legitimate.
Okay, yeah, I don't think legally we can do that after the hearing is closed. So, we'll, you know, again, that's, this is what the applicant would like, all in, and then adding the forty-five decibels. But you guys are open to make a, a motion. Yeah, maybe staff could answer your question. You could always ask us a question, Chris.
Do I?
You could always ask us a question.
The question wasn't equipped with more a statement than it was a question. It was some concern over who's gonna actually be the enforcement mechanism at ten and eleven o'clock at night. And to a large degree, he was correct in saying that it originates with a call to nine-one-one is what starts the enforcement process, so.
Oh, I thought we were gonna have police at every event. That's what the applicant said.
They want police there.
Yep. Well, off-hours police are required to enforce the law.
If that's at every event, then, then they can handle it, sure. Then they can handle being there.
I didn't think there was gonna, I didn't think that was an issue.
Well, I think what would happen is the officers that are there would try to, would, would enforce it, but if they didn't, then a call would come in.
That's right.
And they'd be there to respond to any calls.
Yeah, they would get, they'd radio it in there, but, yeah. Okay, so where we're at now, you know, what's on the, on the board right there is hours that the applicant says they can live with, and as well as dropping the music down an hour before. Now, question is, you know, do you want to make a motion different?
Okay, refresh my memory. We don't have a motion right now that we're debating. We're waiting for another motion? And Matt's gone three strikes and is out?
Gone two.
Joe, you want, did you already make a motion?
If Chris will flip back to what was just up. Yeah.
And you want to put the starting time also in there?
I would, my motion would include the staff conditions, but not the planning commission conditions for simplification. Because I, I think that we, it was the subset that was most appropriate. I would include the forty-five decibel one hour prior to music ending. I would include the Friday and Saturday night music ending at eleven. Actually, I, we, the, um, no, that's, that's correct. The rest of that is correct as is.
You don't want, you're opposed to these three?
Yes, because we're, we're already saying they have to be at forty-five decibels an hour prior to closing, and we have the sound ordinance that's enforced other than that.
But Batesville deliveries, portable toilets.
Those weren't part of the staff?
No.
No, this is what planning commission added.
Okay.
That's why we're saying we want to add those.
Can you add, okay, here's, here's what I'm gonna, I move that we approve this special use permit with the staff recommendations and the following recommendations. The planning commission conditions, one C, three, four, and five, which is, uh, has to do with.
Location and music.
Location and music, deliveries, and portable toilet situation. That the decibel reduction, the noise reduction will occur one hour prior to the music ending time. That on Friday and Saturday, the music will end at eleven P.M., and the facility will close at midnight. On Sunday through Thursday, the music ends at ten P.M., and the facility closes at eleven.
Second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, and Joe, just to clarify, is this on the board, your motion?
Correct.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Lobst. Now we'll open up for discussion. No questions. Anybody on this motion?
Would like to see alcohol as well and fifteen minutes prior to the music ending.
Which, you predict?
Can I ask a question of our city attorney?
Go ahead.
This ordinance, or this special use permit doesn't cover an alcohol license. It doesn't restrict the use of alcohol or permit the use of alcohol. Those things fall under something entirely different, correct?
That's correct. It's a separate, it's a separate code. It'll be a separate approval, not come in for the permit.
All right, so.
So if that's something that'll come before us, we can. All right, is there any other discussion on this motion that's?
I'm certainly haven't any discussion, but I understand the applicant's position of the weekday hours, that they don't think that, that, that the earlier times are permissible. But I won't, I won't support this during, because of the weekday hours.
Okay, so you're saying that if the eleven o'clock close. All right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, just to advise, Robin just informed me, and I want to make sure you're aware as well, is that probably the expectation will be is that this entity will not secure their own alcohol license, but will in fact use third-party vendors to cater events. So I just wanted, didn't want the council to walk away thinking that, that they would be, this entity would be back in front of you for an alcohol permit. They will be, they will be using third.
So we could put the restriction on alcohol to be, stop serving fifteen minutes before music ends.
And I think the applicant had mentioned that they were on, they had fifteen minutes for them.
What you're saying is we want to add that.
You want to get another bite at the apple.
We have an option to add it.
We can, but we just have to rescind the second and then the first and do it again.
What's the friendly amendment?
I don't know if there is a really a friendly amendment, is there? What's the proper, would we rescind this?
So we have to withdraw?
State it again.
And add?
Well, you might want to, yeah, well, a fri- a friendly amendment, given this procedural posture, we've got everything in front of us, yes, I think that would be, that would be appropriate.
Okay, would you add on there the alcohol, last call fifteen minutes before music stops?
One other thing we hadn't brought up, starting times.
Right hand. Hours of operation.
Start at nine A.M.
Does the sitmaker, the second, they agree with the alcohol cease the service of fifteen minutes?
I agree.
Thank you.
Now, to clarify, since we're putting a closing time, we put a starting time?
Or is that in the planning or staff?
That's in the staff condition.
But we're, but we're amending those hours right here from what's in there for staff? Add the nine.
I want you to, it's all right with the second in the motion, you want to add the start?
We're doing a great job right now.
We got a system.
Okay. All right, Ken, so are we, procedurally, do we need to have him?
I will be happy to read this.
I would like that. Go ahead to clarify for the record, since it's been some.
If you want to give a second, you can.
Okay. So I move that we approve this special use permit. I've even lost the number that we're talking about here.
It's the only one we're doing tonight.
Yeah, I know. It's U fourteen dash O two, with staff conditions as recommended, plus the planning commission conditions, one C, three, four, and five, with a maximum decibel reading one hour prior to music ending in forty-five decibels. Alcohol service ceasing fifteen minutes prior to music end. And the schedule for hours of operation Friday and Saturday opens no earlier than nine A.M. Music ends no later than eleven P.M. Facility closes at midnight. Hours of operation for Sunday through Thursday opens no earlier than nine A.M. Music ends no later than ten P.M. Facility closes at eleven P.M.
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion as read into the record as also on the screen from Councilmember LaGoria. I have a second from Councilmember Lobst. Now, discussion, just, I have a question of the applicant. Obviously, is applicant clear on what this motion is? And also to clarify, I believe this is different, it's obviously different than what you were asking for, is the difference would be the, during the week, it's closing an hour early than you had requested or would like?
It definitely is, but I think we can live with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? One, two, three, four, five in favor and Councilmember Hewitt against, or Councilmember Thurman, it's staying. All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll.
You've been on break for two hours.
All right, if you guys are okay with a break, five-minute break. All right, you guys have a five-minute break.
You still have those fish down there, or the fish off?
Yeah, that's what I need to do, we need to break. We sell our goldfish jar.
Well, you know, we don't have too many of these, so.
So next time I make a really long motion, y'all have to, have to be patient with me.
But yours usually, yours usually makes sense, so.
Well, I don't know, let me just, no, because we still have a form of sentence, no. Because, just, just because we're on a break, we still have a form present, so the microphones are still on, so you.
Hot mic.
Well, I wasn't there.
Get in trouble for a hot mic.
Bill, my phone died.
Is there anything that we can postpone till next?
I brought, I knew it was gonna be late. I brought another battery.
I should have brought a battery. Mine died like forty-five minutes ago.
What kind of phone you have?
Optimus.
Here.
Optimus G Android. You got your cord, buddy. Awesome.
Can, can we go to executive session, can we change the gender round and go ahead and go to executive session now and then?
There was not gonna be a hundred percent.
I don't think we can either. We're already past my best shot. So we needed a break, because everybody's eating goldfish. Everybody's eating. Everybody's eating dead shrimp. There's not any water, what? I've got, like, coconut, coconut, but no water.
I wore something like that on my last X-ray.
Chris, you want dark pepper? Anybody want anything? Yeah, I bet this is my second. Anybody else? I can't have one, I can't be waiting for that two hours. I have a half hour to sit in here.
You know, they say, I mean, you read it, that the diet coke is worse, versus regular, as far as they make you eat more, they make you hungrier.
Well, I told John Ross, he turned the cocoa in the apartment the other day, I said, you see your, uh, cocoa cola's a lot, uh, diet coke's a lot.
All right. All right, let's, uh, let's resume for our five-minute break.
We have any more items tonight?
Yeah, yeah. Let's prioritize, Chris, let's talk about council, do, do we want to move the budget discussion? Or definitely move it? Do we want to tackle some other issues here and then come back to it, or?
I think, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to at least recommend we do tonight, because we're in a published zoning agenda, and that has its own set of advertising requirements to go along with it. I think it's also important that we've had somebody sign up to speak and public comment on all six of the items tonight, so we probably should go ahead and stay in the zoning agenda. And then I might recommend that we handle the two items to finish off new business, and then go to executive session. And if at the end of executive session we happen to have any time left to talk about the budget, we'll do that. Otherwise, I hate to infringe upon your next Monday night, but we'll need to call a meeting to defer those items, because our ordinance doesn't allow us to go past midnight unless we're in one of those emergency modes. So I don't know that we can physically get this agenda done by midnight tonight. And those would seem to be the package that would push the easiest together, if that's acceptable to the council.
All right, so we are moving forward with the zoning agenda, so do you want to call the, the next item on our zoning agenda?
Next item is consideration of RZ fourteen dash zero five to amend Article Six, Division Twenty-three, CUP, Community Unit Plan District. Agenda item number fourteen, one eight nine, first presentation at July seventh, regular city council meeting discussed at July fourteenth. City council work session deferred at July twenty-first meeting to the September twenty-second this evening's meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, um, thank you. Mr. Mayor, the community development department recommends that we defer discussion on this item until the October twentieth mayor and city council meeting. The intent is also to have a discussion at the October work session as well on some of these zoning ordinances. So, so that is our recommendation for tonight.
Mayor, I'm making motions that we, uh.
We do have a public comment.
A public comment.
Public comment, all right, during public comment.
Yes, there is. Mr. Walt Recut.
Thank you very much. My name's Walt Recut. Live at six fifteen Scarlet Oak Trail. Again, I know you bring up the CUP. I have no idea it's gonna be deferred. That's not what it says on your agenda. And again, I just get very frustrated. I keep on hoping that we'll come up with something, that hopefully there'll be something here that's different than what I see each time, and it's not. Everything's staying exactly the same, and it's just very frustrating for me, just. Everything's staying exactly the same, and it's just very frustrating for me just to hear, okay, we're gonna defer it again, we're gonna defer it again. Yet I try to have people come in, meet with staff, talk about these different issues, and I just don't see anything happening. And of course, the moratorium goes on and on and on, but we don't come to a resolution. So it's just very frustrating to me to keep on coming here, and I'd sure like to just get some decision made on this. And basically, some of your best communities in the city are CUP, Crooked Creek, White Columns, parts of White Columns, Triple Crown, Kingsley Estates, and yet we're gonna throw out the ordinance and come in with a new ordinance, so why are we doing that? I keep asking the question, it doesn't get answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, vote for a motion.
I make a motion that we defer consideration of RZ fourteen dash zero five to amend Article Six, Division Twenty-three, CUP until October twentieth? October twentieth.
You have a motion, Councilmember Thurman, second from Councilmember Hewitt, for deferral till October twenty-second?
Twentieth.
Any discussion? Let's go.
So, Robin, to answer our citizens' question, what is gonna be changed between now and then, or Kathy, what's gonna change between now and then that we're gonna be able to vote on it next time?
Well, we'd like to have a full discussion on the CUP and the NUP, but, and especially the R two, which we're going to propose to be modified to what we'll call an RR. And the idea is, is to take some of those setbacks that were previously allowed in the NUP and the CUP, and make them a little more stringent in the new RR that we're going to create. So it requires some discussion about it, and we didn't feel that we had had the opportunity for that discussion, so the intent is, at the October fifteenth workshop meeting, to talk all about these different ordinances, so we can have the full discussion. We also, at that time, wanted to talk about, there are some issues about the covenants in the manor, how they relate to the Northwest Overlay Zone, the height, the percentage of coverage, there were a lot of zoning issues that we felt that if we, it would be better if we put them all together into one major discussion and have that the next time, which is October fifteenth. And then we could, could take action on it if you so desired on October twentieth.
So what's your confidence level if we have those discussions, that we could actually vote on this at the second meeting in October? I'm trying to help our citizens understand when we're really gonna vote on this.
I am, I am very, very hopeful that, because we also would like to see these move forward. As a matter of fact, one of these, we're gonna recommend that we do move forward on tonight, which is the TR, which we're coming up to soon, because, okay, so we're trying.
Is part of the discussion gonna be why we're even doing this?
Yes, sure, we can talk about that.
Because I'm not clear why we're, I mean, like I said, I really like the CUPs and the NUPs, because it gave you flexibility, and it didn't make everything fit in certain little boxes.
Exactly, but if you remember, we had the issue, the discussion that came out from some members of the community, that we were giving more density than what the true yield would be of the parcel size. And so, so that's, I think that's, that's a very fair question, and certainly we need to discuss that as well.
I mean, I just need to understand why we're changing it if we're gonna be looking at changing it.
Counsel, the other thing, I wanna continue on that thought. We've had this discussion before, that it was appropriate to bring these items forward when we could bring them forward with a discussion of the overlay itself, because when we brought these forward before, there was a conflict between the overlay that had just been adopted by the council and these new zoning designation dealing with, as you recall, building height as well as total lot area of coverage. So it's appropriate, we believe, that they all be discussed at the same time, because they're all intertwined. Now, as you know, with the zoning item, when it's deferred to a date, specific meeting, we have to publish it on the meeting agenda whether we want to or not. The place I would highlight and ask the public to go if they wanna see exactly what is being contemplated, what's being proposed at the meeting that they might come to, is to go into the packet that approves, that publishes for each agenda. And on each agenda, you'll see there's a packet, agenda item cover sheet. On each of those cover sheets, it suggests what we want for that item during the meeting, and these are clearly marked that we are, that we were, and do plan on recommending deferral at the meeting. It just required it to be on that packet as opposed to the agenda itself, because there's certain legal requirements to go along with the advertising agenda. Not trying to make excuses, just want to, just want you to understand where it was listed and where it wasn't.
Isn't it also published in the monthly zoning meeting? I don't wanna call it agenda, but I think I saw that it was in those emails, to kinda look out a few weeks.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I think if Robin can forecast it, she tries to. Just, just another spot to look, to see what's gonna happen.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? If you're none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Next item is consideration of RZ fourteen zero six to amend Article Six, Division Twenty-four, NUP, Neighborhood Unit Plan District, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, One Nine Zero, first presentation at July seventh council meeting, discussed at the July fourteenth. Council work session deferred at the July twenty-first to this evening. Ms. Kathy Field, and we do have one public comment.
Mr. Mayor, the Community Development Department recommends deferral of this item as well to the October twentieth, two thousand fourteen, mayor and city council meeting.
Do I have a public comment on this?
Mr. Walt Recut.
Same comment, Walt Recut, six fifteen Scarlet Oak Trail, Milton, Georgia. Same comment as the CUP, just trying to get this thing done. And even though the city attorney says recommends deferral, excuse me, but you have the ultimate vote. So I can't be sure that that you'll actually defer it, even though the staff recommends it. So I need to be here in case action is taken, so that's the reason why. Thank you.
Okay, close the hearing. Any questions of staff or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer Agenda Item Fourteen, One Nine Zero to the October twentieth, I believe it is, is that correct?
Twenty, it's twentieth, I believe.
Yeah, October twentieth meeting, second.
Second, Rick. I got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Morag, for deferral. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous?
Our next item is consideration of RZ fourteen dash zero seven to amend Article Six, Division Thirteen, TR, Town House Residential District, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, One Ninety-one, first presentation at the July seventh council meeting, discussed at the July fourteenth work session, deferred at July twenty-first to tonight's meeting. We do have one public comment, Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Community Development Department does recommend approval this evening of the proposed text amendment as discussed below. This zoning district really does not, is not directly impacted by the current zoning moratorium in place, and so we see no reason why not to move this particular zoning district forward. Just by way of summary, this amendment to the TR district is in response, I'm sorry, currently, the way the district is currently written, detached single-family residences are permitted. In the, in the past, this has caused confusion with the public. It is assumed that only townhouse products are permitted to be developed. With the proposed amendment, staff has deleted the allowance of detached single-family units. The existing R five A residential district provides the comparable district that the TR allowed for detached single-family development. So in essence, we took out all reference to the single family, because this is a TR zoning district, and it was very confusing. So we took out the single family, but the single family can be taken care of within the existing R five A, which is a residential single-family zone. So it's really a way of cleaning up this TR district, which we really feel should be for townhomes. So we took out the reference to the single family, but we also made some additional tweaks to it to clean it up a bit. And, and such as the fact that we've asked for open space requirements based on the total number of units developed, rear-loaded units adjacent to exterior streets, height requirement to be consistent with other residential districts recently amended, we reduced the number of units within one building from twenty to eight, which is consistent with the requirement of the Deerfield Form-Based Code. It's staff's opinion that this would not create any future problems for the development community. In addition, the Form-Based Code and the Highway Nine and Crab Apple areas provide needed tools to develop a townhouse product. The only area to see that is not within the Form-Based Code areas and would have potential rezoning to this TR district is the Bethany Bend area between Highway Nine and Morris Road. So we're talking about a very small area that would not come under the existing Form-Based Codes, of which this zoning district would apply. You have in front of you tonight, it's, the changes are shown in blue that we made, and then in addition, we did find a couple of other corrections that really make for, they were gratuitous and duplicative, and so the ones in yellow, we thought we should also make changes to. So I'm happy to go through with you the changes to the TR. On the first page, essentially, we took out the reference to the single-family dwelling. And on the second page, we refer to a maximum height limit of two stories, with a maximum height of twenty-eight feet from average finished grade to the bottom of the roof eve. Now, this is the new height definition that we've been using, and we were gonna discuss that at our next meeting, but the fact that it's coming up in this, I've got our city architect here, so if you would like to have a quick explanation of why we changed this and why we don't feel that this is unduly onerous to developers to comply with, I'm happy to have Bob come up if you'd like.
I'd like to have a quick explanation, since he's here.
Mayor, council? With the height, the old height definition took it from average grade, average finished grade around the building, to the midpoint of the roof. And what that really did was forced roofs to be at a very low pitch, because most people were looking for the floor-to-floor heights to be at the maximum, nine feet, ten foot. So what we've done, and it's very consistent with the Form-Based Product, is measured height from the average finished grade to the height of the eve, which is where the gutter is on the, on the roof line. And I can state that every townhouse that has come under review, and I do several of them, probably fifteen a week, I've got a number of townhouses that come in, all meet this definition. In fact, the development community has told me they really like this definition, because now they could put eight-on-twelve, ten-on-twelve roof pitches and get the height on the roof that they're looking for.
Going down to subarticle E, minimum TR development frontage shall be, it's changed from thirty-five to hundred-and-fifty feet. Define development frontage? Is that one, that's not one single unit?
No, Robin actually can do a very good explanation, so Robin, why don't you take on this one?
So the idea is that it would just, let's say if you had a development that had just an entrance, and it was a long driveway, it's just the frontage of the entire development would need to be a hundred-and-fifty feet, because if you'd imagine if it was a fifty-foot right-of-way, and then a fifty-foot setback on either side, which is typically, it's required on development standards, so we just put it up front in the ordinance to show that you really need a hundred feet, a hundred-and-fifty feet on the perpendicular.
Not just thirty-five, which would be the width of the driveway.
Thirty-five with the driveway, right? Right. It wouldn't fit a right-of-way, anyway.
Almost like a flag lot.
Right.
Yes, so, so this was one of the cleanups that we did. Are you all satisfied with Bob's explanation? Any more questions? As I'll move on. Okay, thank you, Bob.
Under subsection D, we changed the minimum lot width to be twenty-five feet, because we're finding that the products that are coming in, and the type of townhouse product we want, we want a wider product, we don't want a twenty-foot wide product, so we made it twenty-five. Then, we already talked about E. F, we thought was duplicative with D, in that lot frontage and lot width are really the same, and so we didn't need F at all. So we took out F. G, the minimum heated floor area, we changed from eleven hundred square feet to eighteen hundred, because you've got at least a two-floor townhome, if not a three, and eleven hundred makes a pretty small footprint for a townhome. So we really felt, and, and we did give you a little chart that shows that our townhomes are coming in much larger anyway, they're coming in, you know, anywhere in the two-thousand, twenty-one hundred square foot range, so we didn't feel that eighteen hundred was unduly onerous. Then we changed the minimum front yard, rather than forty feet back, again, because we have our new guidelines for our Form-Based Codes, where we're trying to relate more to the sidewalk and pushing the buildings up toward the sidewalk. So rather than having the forty-foot setback, it's now just twenty feet, so that brings those townhomes up closer to the sidewalk, which is the intent of the Form-Based Code. Same with the minimum side yard, again, you're bringing it up closer to the street. The, let's see, what else changed? The, under HIJ, under J, minimum accessory structure requirements, we were saying that the same thing twice, so we took out one of the sentences. Under K, we didn't need, we took out K because it was a maximum lot coverage, and we felt that with all the setback requirements that are in, in place, that we didn't really need to say that it shall not exceed fifty percent of the total land area. We just thought, we're gonna let the setbacks sort of limit what the coverage is. And then required open space, we, the intent was to say a minimum of one thousand square feet per unit of open space, what we require when you have over fifty units in a development, and you have under fifty units, there should be a minimum of seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet per unit of open space. So those were, those are new requirements, and we wanted to make it sure that you understood it was per unit.
Kathy, the minimum square foot, you'd made, made a distinction a little bit earlier about Bethany Bend down to Morris, townhome restrictions. The minimum square footage, does that apply in that area also?
Yes, that's because this zoning district will be applied to the Bethany Bend area. That's really the only area that is going, that has TR zoning in it. Everything else is covered under the Form-Based Code. Okay, so page three, the last page, under three, a minimum eighty percent of any common wall shall be contiguous with each adjoining unit. And that means that the wall has to, each of the walls have to be against, be against each other for at least eighty percent of that distance. And that's to alleviate these townhomes we've had, where you've had a little wall in between them, that really isn't a townhome, but they've tried to show connection. So that's to alleviate that. And then four, when units are located on property adjacent to an exterior street, we want them to be rear-loaded, and that the front facade should face the street. We don't wanna see the rear of townhomes on exterior streets. And we want each unit to provide two off-street parking spaces within the principal structure. And I, and I know I've, somewhere, let's see, was it on page two?
The top, number one, is no more than eight dwelling units for a single building.
Ah, yeah, I'm sorry, on page three, in the top, the first one, no more than eight dwelling units shall form a single building. There'd been some discussion about how many we should allow to be in a row, and we went to the Form-Based Code, which currently says no more than eight units, and so we use that as the number, because it's already been established within the Deerfield and the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. So that's how we got that number of eight. So those are the changes that we made, there were tweaks, few additions, and then clearly we took out the single-family reference. But there is no reason for this, should you so decide for this not to move forward tonight.
Do we already have public comment on this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walt Recut.
Mr. Walt Recook.
Lily Walt Recook, 615 Scarlet Oak Trail. I just want to say, first of all, the, what's in your, online for this TR is not the same as what you're looking at, so I have no idea what changed between whenever and when I printed this out. So I've been told that, and you've been told, that there's three different levels of comments, one in yellow, I don't have any of those comments, so I don't know what I'm looking at now, given two minutes to look at it. I will say, in the height regulation, I'm not sure why we're changing it to, from 40 feet, but the biggest problem I've got, it says two stories. Now, I don't care if you say 28 feet or not, from finished grade to the bottom of the roof eve, that tells me it's still two stories. Most townhomes I see are three stories. And again, I don't understand why that is, it's something I brought up the last time. Under E, the minimum development frontage, these projects typically don't have a right-of-way coming into the project. These are typically private streets, so it could very well be that there is no right-of-way, that it's basically a 24-foot wide street, and that's it. And then you're saying that you want to have another 50 and 50. Well, if there is no right-of-way, why are we going to this extreme? Why are we making it all the way down up to 150 feet? Same thing with heated floor areas, I know we're saying, here's what the general sizes are, I have not seen that table, that table was not part of the report, that was online. Again, on the open space, they changed things there as well. They're saying 1,000 square feet per unit, and again, that's, that's a lot of square footage you're asking for, or 75, 750 square feet per unit, if it's less than 50, that could be a good bit of land that they're giving up for a townhome, which is very unusual. Now, you know, I'm not exactly 100% sure what they're considering open space in this criteria, if it's just landscaping or not, around the building and how they're going to consider that. I'm sorry, I've got to flip and look to make sure I'm getting all the yellows and everything else right. And then they're changing the number of units from 20 down to eight. Again, sometimes it makes more sense to be at the 10 or 12 number of units, I'm not sure why we're dropping all the way down to eight. Again, that's just something that just doesn't make sense. And the last thing is, each unit shall provide two off-street parking spaces within the principal structure. I just want to understand what kind of parking spaces we're calling out. We're calling out vehicular, we're calling out trucks, we're calling out motorcycles, just let's make sure we're defining what kind of parking spaces you're asking for what. Those are my comments, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but that's, that's my position on this. Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill? Unganged units where there's zero separation, or, Robin, how do our fire codes address fire separation?
I believe, I think they have to have a certain amount of, like a one-hour wall, or, I mean, there is building code that they have to meet for the, when they're together. Or you mean between two buildings?
Between two buildings, it's 10 feet.
It's 10 feet.
10 feet, right.
Bill, where units are joined, we call it for two-hour, four-hour walls?
I think it's one hour, but I'm not sure. It's a building, you always have the building review it.
It's a two-hour, according to, our architect's saying two hours.
Okay, got it.
The two stories. I'm assuming if you have a garage, pull-under garage, if it has another room there, is that not considered a story, or how is it, how is the two stories calculated? I mean, it'd be pretty high ceilings if you got two stories at 28 feet, but.
Bob, do you want to?
We don't, under the definition of story, we don't count basements or attics, like third-story retreats that don't take up the full floor.
So if you've got a pull-under garage, and it still has a room and all, one finished area in it, because it's primarily a garage, it's not considered a story?
That's correct. We've been treating that always as a lower level. And the way they label the drawings is, when you go up to the first floor, that's the habitable floor. So that, that lower level is not treated as a story.
Under the definition of story, it excludes basements and attics.
But that wouldn't be a basement if it's pulled.
It's not below grade.
It's not below grade.
It's a portion of it's below grade, whether.
Well, a portion of it may not even be below grade, it just may be that the bottom level is a garage with a, or maybe only a portion of it's below grade, I mean, I don't know.
How do we say that?
Does it need to say how many stories it is, or does it just need to say a maximum of 28?
Maximum of height.
Or three stories of 28 feet?
Yeah.
Whatever they can get.
Yeah.
We'll just limit it to height, because it'll limit the number of stories just naturally.
Right. I think that's a good.
But is that, but is 28 then right?
I'm sorry, is that limited?
That's up to the E.
It's up to the E, but.
We need them.
He just said three stories, I mean, that would take care of it, wouldn't it? 28 feet.
Up to three stories.
Up to three stories?
You guys thinking?
To Karen's point, most of the townhomes that are on Bethany Bend and even coming off from Highway nine are three stories technically, because they're not below grade, and they do have a garage that you pull in, so there's two living spaces plus a finished space on that first level.
Well, I would suggest we say three stories, and because if you just go by the height, you could conceivably put a fourth story, you could squeeze a fourth story in.
We don't want that in the roof.
And we don't want that, because you're going to have very, you know, low ceilings, so I think we'd be happy, the intent is to have three stories at 28 feet, so I think that would be great, if, you know, that would be, that would work.
All right, do we want to do three stories now?
Sure.
About three stories.
Okay.
Right.
I think I closed the public hearing, I believe, to make sure I did, but no one discussed it. All right, any other questions for staff? Someone want to make a motion? Few stories?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve RZ 14-07 to amend Article six, Division 13, TR District, with the amendment, and Article. Two A, that we change two stories to read three stories.
Got a motion from Councilmember Loskis, read into the record, and second by Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Next item is consideration of RZ 14-08 to amend Article six, Division four, R2, Single Family Residential District, Agenda Item Number 14, 192. First presentation at the July 7th, regular city council meeting, discussed at the July 14th. City council work session deferred at July 21st meeting until tonight. Ms. Kathy Field, we do have one public comment.
Yes, thank you. The Community Development Department recommends deferral of this item to the October 20th, 2014 council meeting.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Walt Recook.
Good evening, Walt Recook, 615 Scarlet Oak Trail. I just want to commend the staff, I do believe that a conservation subdivision is a good thing to go ahead and create, but it is a very complex ordinance to write. It's not something that can be simply done or really understood by most, most planners and such, so I do recommend that you, you really probably need to hire someone that really understands the nuances, especially with septic being the primary means of handling public sewer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comment?
No, sir, that's all.
Close the public hearing. And any questions? Any motion?
I'll make a motion that we defer consideration of RZ 14-08 to amend Article six, Division four, the R2, Single Family Residential District.
Okay.
Second.
What? To the October 20th.
All right, motion for, for, from Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Longoria, I believe, or is it Rick?
Yeah, either one of us.
All right, Rick.
I think it's Rick.
Let's give it Rick. By Rick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Sudi, you want to call the next?
Next item is consideration of RZ 14-11 to amend Chapter 64, Article 21, of the zoning ordinance to create a conservation subdivision ordinance, Agenda Item Number 14, 268. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the Community Development Department recommends withdrawal of RZ 14-11 in order to allow further dialogue between the city and the community stakeholders.
Okay. Any public comment on this?
We do have one, Mr. Walt Recook.
I mixed up the two, but on the R2, that's what I meant to say, that's another one, they haven't really changed anything, and keep on seeing the same thing, and I wish they did something different, but on this one, I do commend them, they do need to have some serious understanding of the conservation subdivision, it's a tough ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we defer consideration of RZ 14-11 to the October 20th meeting.
Defer, is that asked for?
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Oh, I'm sorry, withdraw. I should have paid closer attention to what Kathy said.
Second. Okay, I got a motion for withdrawal.
I was on the defer train.
Longoria, second by Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay, we need to talk, what time is it? We want to put the, we talked about putting the budget items behind and pulling some other items ahead, and then we can decide.
They're the easiest to package.
Decide if we want to do that. Do we need to do something formal, though, to skip through our agenda here?
You probably need to go ahead and, you talked about deferring those to next month, though?
Or maybe, no, well, eventually, yes. If we don't get, if we don't have time tonight, we will. Right now, we're talking about just changing places.
That's fine, just go ahead and motion to go to your next agenda.
Okay.
So the motion would be then to now move to new business and move unfinished business to the end of the meeting?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to move to new business?
Mayor, I move we move to new business.
Second.
Okay, and then we go back.
This is second.
Bill. After that. All right. Sudi, will you call our first? Oh, well, no, I need a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, new business, you want to call the first item? Parks and Record Board, we've already done that, so we will go to the.
Consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the City of Milton Design Review Board at large, item number 14, 270, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, I'm going to, Bruce Smithman was my appointee on the DRB, and has had a conflict, Mayor, and appreciate all his service. I would like to nominate Ed Parsons, he's been wanting to be more involved and always asked me to do a position, and I feel like he'll do a good job. I'm going to do y'all a favor, since it's so late, and I won't read the page-long bio, I think most everybody knows who Ed Parsons is, so I'm nominating him for my DRB appointee.
I'll make a motion to approve your nomination of Ed Parsons.
I'll second the motion.
I got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Loskis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, going to number three.
Next item is consideration of a resolution, unilaterally modifying the sewer service map between the City of Milton and Fulton County pursuant to the amended Fulton-Milton sewer intergovernmental agreement, Agenda Item Number 14, 271. I do have one public comment, Mr. Chris Lagerblatt.
Mayor, Council, I'm going to turn this over to Robin to describe.
Okay, this is a piece of property, or two parcels, that the Community Development Staff approved as a concept site plan for the development of three parcels for a total of 12.8 acres on the west side of Arnold Mill Road pursuant to the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. The southern parcel contains approximately 8.2 acres, as currently depicted on the sewer service map that you previously had approved, but the northern two parcels containing approximately 4.6 acres are not on the sewer map. Based on the fact that the Crab Apple Form-Based Code recommended T5 and T4 transect zones, which are fairly high-density and would require sewer, the applicant has received an approved concept site plan from our Community Development Department for the subject four-point, for the total, but it includes the 4.6 acres requiring an extension of sewer, sanitary sewer to it. Because of its, Milton's intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County, the county is the waste and sewer provider to Milton. And so just to explain, in the past, you have, you've seen rezonings come before you, I think the Hopewell Road was one example where you rezoned, and then you amended the map on the southern part of, on the east side of Hopewell. Well, now that we have so much Form-Based Code, you don't see those developments in front of you, and so, but we still need to bring before you, since this applicant has an approved concept plan to develop on the west side of Arnold Mill Road, just at the intersecting part of Green, we need to ask you to amend the sewer map with Fulton County to be, for them to be able to do their complete development, and in your packet, there is the concept plan that was approved by our staff, and it is in conformance with our Form-Based Code. We worked a lot with the developer. If you look at it, there's two creek crossings, because we wanted a interconnectivity, we didn't want a dead end, so they were compliant with that. So we really do think this will make for a good example of the Form-Based Code in that area, so we recommend approval for extending of the sewer. And the castle's on, excuse me, the castle's on the north side, so we don't think it's going to go any further.
Do we have public comment?
We do, Mr. Walt Recook.
Well, come on, you're here, you might as well.
Which item is this for?
Yeah, I'm going to close the public hearing now. Any questions for Robin on this?
It was not public, yeah, it's a resolution.
I have no questions, but just a comment, I historically voted against these, I was satisfied with the map that we approved, ever how long ago it seemed to be, so.
So you don't have a change?
No, I'm lost. Stick with it.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Not, we have a motion?
My only comment would be that if we're going to approve a, a plan that has calls for a Form-Based Code that says this is what ought to go there, then there's no way we can, it can go there without sewer, so we either need to change the plans that we're approving, or we need to allow them to have sewers so they can build what we tell them has to go there, so.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution, unilaterally modifying the sewer service map between the City of Milton and Fulton County pursuant to the amended Fulton-Milton sewer intergovernmental agreement.
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Loskis. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
We had, Bert opposing.
I had a question for Robin.
Okay, and, but that was, all in favor except for Bert was opposed. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Quick question, Robin. You going to anticipate more of these cases going up Arnold Mill Road?
I can't, I can't really tell, not on the, I don't believe there'll be any more on the west. on the west side. There might be some amendments on the east side of, because there, it's a corridor, so, maybe a couple more.
Okay.
This one was unique, Bill. I don't know if you recall, some time ago, we had the properties right there with, and owner had bought forty-eight, I believe, sewer taps from the City of Mountain Park.
Right.
That's the nuance with this one, is that those forty-eight taps were gonna be used on one of the parcels and actually, the development plan is better by incorporating those additional four acres, so.
Right.
Um, that's kind of what brought us to this point, was those forty-eight taps existed and they existed on eight acres, so they could have built to a even more dense of a standard. So, that's why this, I think, is a, is the right thing that the council did, um, is because we were gonna get something there, whether we wanted it or not. This is a better plan.
Who knew what it was gonna look like?
All right, um, do we have a motion to move into executive session to discuss potential and land acquisition and?
Potential.
Before you do that, just because I've got a, a whole group of staff that's sticking around at eleven o'clock, can we, can we forecast whether or not we think we're gonna get to the budget tonight? Because I'd love to safely get as many people home as I can.
I, I would rather wait and do the budget when we can do it the time, give it the time it deserves, rather than just trying to do budget eleven thirty at night when.
I am totally open to whatever the council wants to do.
I would, I would.
We, we could, and recognizing though that if we decide we're not gonna do it tonight, we have to get it done by September, or by October the first, so.
Because that's.
We really are at a drop dead of one week from tonight. Or we could do it Wednesday, or we could do it, as long as we have twenty-four hours notice from tonight, we can do it whenever, we just have to have it done by next Wednesday. So, that's the.
All right, I, we don't, we don't really know how long we anticipate it taking.
Yeah, you'd run out of time.
So, it's, we wanna take the, tag the gamble and do it and unfortunately run out of time or if we wanna go ahead and, what's the thought?
Let's defer.
Our sta, our staff will do whatever you all want, want to do.
They just don't want us to come to another.
I prefer to.
I'm gonna do it anyway, I can do it tonight or whatever.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to, you know, giving it a shot if we wanna do it, but if, if the majority wants to.
I'm just afraid we'll rush through it, just to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would.
Okay, I see three at least saying that, so I'm okay with rescheduling a meeting.
The question would be, is could we get it done as quick as Wednesday? I mean, I'd, I'd rather not push it till a, a whole week if we can, could we come together on a Wednesday night?
I don't know.
Five o'clock, six o'clock?
Yeah.
I can't get up the rest of my hands.
I can dial in on a Wednesday night.
What's our next, next Monday?
Next Monday, if, if, could the whole council be here in person next Monday?
I can't.
Jeff?
I can't, I'm sorry.
You'll do it tonight?
I, I don't mind sticking it out, but I, I, I can participate, um, it's okay for me to participate. I'll be out of the jurisdiction for sure.
That's number two for you.
That's number two.
That's your second one, that means you can't.
I had originally planned on this, so, yeah.
Of course. No, it's, I'm just.
Legally.
Okay.
And I certainly don't mind letting others know my issues related to the budget.
I can have a meeting on Monday.
Well, do we wanna do Monday? Would Monday be better or, or this Wednesday? Bert can't be here either on Wednesday.
Bert, can you be here on Monday?
You want us to do it Monday?
Let's just do it.
All right.
Monday at six.
Do a typical Monday.
I'll do it at ten.
Ten P M.
Yeah. Why not?
Okay, all right. We got that, we'll, uh.
Okay, so then, at this point in the meeting, I, I, if, if we're gonna be certain about that, then let's go ahead and not keep the public in suspense and, yeah, it would be to move the unfinished business calendar to a special call meeting of Monday, September twenty-ninth.
Can we make that six P M?
At six P M.
I would work those.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second to take the unfinished business and move it till a special call meeting next Monday night at six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, staff, sorry about that.
Sorry, station.
All right, do I have any motion?
You gotta stay either way.
To move into executive dis.
So moved.
Discussion.
So seconded.
To discuss, um, potential and, and litigation and potential and we have.
And, and.
And land acquisition.
Okay.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So, votes.
Second.
All in favor of even doing the meetings?
Aye.
Yeah, Lacy took me out Saturday.
Now, we need a motion to adjourn.
So, move to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on. Do we need to, uh, we've already set that meeting.
Are we doing anything else, or are we done?
We're done, but, all right, Sooty, all in favor? Think we have a motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
None.